Arrival of a couple more board members and then we'll do roll call. So the first proclamation is National Parkinson's Awareness Month. So I'll just read this proclamation. Whereas Parkinson's Disease is a chronic progressive neurological disease and is the second most common neurodegenerative disease in the United States, affecting almost a million people in the United States with one person being diagnosed with Parkinson's every nine minutes. The prevalence of Parkinson's Disease is expected to rise to 1.2 million individuals by 2030. Whereas Parkinson's Disease and related health issues are the 14th largest leading cause of death in the United States. Whereas it is estimated that the total national economic burden of Parkinson's is approximately $52 billion a year. Whereas research suggests the cause of Parkinson's is a combination of genetic and environmental factors, but the exact cause and progression of the disease is still unknown. Whereas there is no objective test or biomarker for Parkinson's Disease, and there is no cure or medication to slow or halt the progression of the disease. Whereas the symptoms of Parkinson's vary from person to person and can include tremors, slowness of movement, and rigidity, and many other factors. Whereas researchers, caregivers, and medical professionals are working to improve the quality of life of persons living with Parkinson's Disease and their families through the research, education, and community support services necessary in finding more effective treatments and to providing access to quality care to those living with the disease today. Now, therefore, I've been Bonfok Mayor of the town of Carbondale, the state of Colorado, do hereby recognize April as Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month in 25. And affix this seal and sign it. So that is our Parkinson's Awareness Month proclamation. We'll now move on to our Student of the Month awards. And what I usually do with these is I'll stand up over here and sort of face you all who are here to see your special students get recognized, and they can walk up one at a time, and you can take pictures and whatever else you want to do. So I'll be able to.
Mayor, we did have some folks here for the proclamation. If we could maybe have them say a few words and then get a photo with the board if.
Okay.
Mr. Long.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for making that proclamation, Mayor Bonfok. Parkinson's is, as you noted, a significant impact on our community. You know, if there's 1% to 2% of the population of the United States that have Parkinson's, that means there's, by my math, 60, maybe 100 people here in Carbondale who are dealing with that. And the only other thing I'd kind of add about, I know there's plenty on your agenda today, is that Parkinson's is kind of this sneaky silent thing. It just degrades a person over time very slow. And it isn't dramatic like cancer or some of the other things. And it just doesn't, you know, you just say, oh, that person doesn't talk as loud as they did, or that person seems to have balance difficulties. And then, you know, 15, 20 years down the road, they're bedridden and there's burdens. And so it's very appreciated that you all would recognize it. Thank you. I've got my wife here, and Frank McSwain is here as well to kind of support that. I don't think there's any other folks in the Parkinson's community, but we meet every Tuesday over at The Orchard for a Parkinson's Support Group with people here from the community as well. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for being here. Okay, so did we need to have any other comments or anything on that? Okay. All right, we'll move on with our Students of the Month then. All right, so that microphone is about at the height of most students, so that works out well. And I'll just stand here and call your name. And students, when you hear your name called, please come up and stand by me, and I'll just read a few nice things that your teachers and people at your school had to say about you. So our first student of the month is Eliana Bonatowicz. Is Eliana here? Okay, we'll see if she comes in in a moment. Our next student of the month is Thea Monroe. Is Thea here? Come on up, Thea.
Get me a little closer if you want, so your mom can see you.
Thea, can you tell us a little bit about yourself? What school do you go to? What grade are you in?
Um, I'm in second grade, and what school I go to is Rossmore Story.
Okay, I'm going to read some really nice things that your teachers said, okay? They said, "Thea has been working very hard this year to advocate for herself and what she needs as a learner in this community. She is a role model for other students to get work done as they need to and take care of herself. She is motivated, she can concentrate, and she is a kind person." Can I shake your hand? Well, congratulations, Thea, for being a Student of the Month, and here's your certificate. All right, our next student of the month is Yalita Catalina Moreno Lopez.
Hello, Yalita. I can stand here and you can look out so you're.
Sure. Do you go by Yalita, or do you shorten it?
I might go by Yalita.
Yalita, okay. And what school do you go to?
I go to Crystal.
And what grade are you in? All right, well, here's some nice things that your teachers said. They said, "Yalita is a respectful and enthusiastic student. She is compassionate toward her classmates and is always willing to help them. She puts 100% effort into her work and has a positive attitude toward learning. She is an awesome artist, too. We are lucky to have her at CRES." Congratulations. All right, our next student of the month is Ivy Chaney. Ivy here? Nope. And our next one is Kimberly Alonso. Kimberly here? Goodbye, Kim.
Kimberly.
All right, and what school and grade are you?
I go to Carbondale Middle School, and I'm in eighth grade.
Okay, almost high school, really close. Well, here's some things that your teachers had to say about you, and they nominated you for Student of the Month. They said, "Kimberly has shown great growth this year. She is completing her assignments, staying on her work, and an asset in class. Kimberly shows kindness to her teachers and peers. She is positive and always has a smile on her face. Kimberly is focused and engaged, and it is a pleasure to have her in class. Great job, Kimberly." Congratulations. All right, did Eliana make it, Eliana? And did Ivy make it? Okay, we'll return to those later if they come. Raleigh, do you want to do a picture? For those Students of the Month who were here, Raleigh's from the Soaper Sun, and he'd love to take your picture out in the lobby to put in the paper this week. All right, thank you for being here. That's awesome.
Yep.
All right, with that, we can proceed with roll call, please.
Assig?
Here.
Rips?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Monte Mayor?
Here.
Robeson?
Here.
Sparhawk?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Next item is the Consent Agenda, which consists of approval of the minutes from March 25th and liquor licenses for Carpiza LLC DBA New York Pizza Carbondale and KNA LLC DBA Sopris Liquor and Wine, and accounts payable from April 8th. Any questions or items to pull for further discussion?
I would move to approve the consent agenda.
Well, second.
Motion by Erica, second by Jess. All in favor, say aye.
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 Passes unanimously. Next item is public comment. If you're here to comment on something not on the agenda tonight, or that's not open to public comment, you can address us from the mic. Did anybody sign up ahead of time? I think we had some signups. Just one? Okay. So the clerk will call your name if you're signed up, and then if anybody else came in after signups, we'll give you a moment.
Beth? Beth, is it Cass? Cassman?
Crossman.
Crossman?
Go ahead, Beth. Thanks for being here, and you have about three minutes.
Yeah, okay. I am Beth Crossman, a resident of Carbondale, living and working as C R S. I have my students here. Teach them local politics. I'm the lead of Protect Immigrants Team, and I want to talk about the positive impact that immigrants have in our valley. Fact one, immigrants work and pay taxes. They pay more taxes than the entire GDP of at least eight states. These taxes fund critical programs like education, social security, public safety, and infrastructure. In Colorado, undocumented immigrants contributed $436 million in taxes in 2022. This number will rise most likely to $537 million. Fact two, Colorado is in the midst of a labor shortage. Many immigrants do jobs Americans aren't interested in. Other immigrants are highly educated and skilled in fields like engineering and healthcare and fill in critical labor shortages in these industries. Fact three, most immigrants are ineligible for federal public benefits such as welfare, food stamps, Medicaid, and supplemental security income. Is that echoing? Should I back up? Most lawful permanent residents, screen card holders, must wait at least five years before they can access these benefits. Undocumented immigrants are entirely ineligible for most federal welfare programs, and yet they pay taxes. Fact four, people coming to the U.S. are coming here because of climate-related catastrophes, wars, terrorism, persecution, or gang activity. There is no evidence that they were prisoners in their countries of origin. And final fact, immigrants, including those that are less likely than native-born Americans, to be incarcerated in prisons. So what I ask of everybody in the room, our own state representative Elizabeth Velasco just sponsored a bill, Colorado Senate Bill 25-276, last Friday. It strengthens trust and security by protecting personal information. Its policies to protect childcare centers, schools, and healthcare facilities removes the fear that immigrants have when they use these facilities. It upholds constitutional rights by separating civil immigration enforcement from criminal law enforcement. I ask that we write to Velasco to thank her for introducing this bill, and also to our state senator Mark Catlin urging him to support the bill. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Beth. All right, is anybody else here who didn't sign up who would like to address the board on something during public comment? Okay, go ahead. You can just approach and tell us your name, please, and where you live. Carbondale's fine if you live in Carbondale or another town. And you have three minutes.
Thanks for hearing me. My name's Nate.
Nate, what's your last name?
Coxey.
Okay.
I live in Basalt.
Okay, thanks.
I'm here to try to raise concern about the environmental impact of what's happening underneath the Carbondale Bridge. I spend quite a bit of time fishing the fork. It's my very favorite trout river in the world. And the changes that I've seen down there under that bridge are really kind of heartbreaking. And I've tried contacting Colorado Parks and Wildlife. I've contacted Carbondale PD. Tried contacting CDOT without any success. Also contacted Garfield PD, and it sounds like there's a very kind of concerning issue of jurisdiction. And my concern is entirely environmental. After listening to the previous woman speak, I agree with everything that she said. But it is affecting the amount of empathy and compassion that I have towards the immigrant community and other homeless people that are not immigrants. It seems pervasive. It seems like there's nobody out there that really wants to address the problem. And that's really concerning to me. I've tried to document it. I've tried taking pictures down there of things that I've seen. I've spoken to John Groves, the Colorado Parks and Wildlife guy that manages that section of the river. He's also told me his stories about what he's found down there. Now, I've seen a lot with my own eyes, spray paint cans, all types of plastic, broken bottles, beer cans everywhere. And John Groves has told me that he's also picked up a fair number of needles, like used for injection down there. There's an abandoned love seat that was down there at least a few weeks ago. Not sure if that's still there or been picked up. But it's not what I think of when I think of Carbondale. It's part of what I appreciate about this community, and I think everybody probably in this room appreciates, is natural resources. I'm guessing that's why most of us live up here, certainly why my wife and I live up here. Just wanted you guys to hear my comment and concern citizen. I'm not a fishing guide, just a public land user that hopes that perhaps something can be done to address this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Can I ask a quick, Nate, can I ask a question?
We usually do all the public comments, and then we.
Just trying to get info.
Yeah, we go back and forth. Any other public comments? Moving on then, the next item is trustee comments. I mean, Ross, that's usually kind of how we address things that come up. We just don't do it back and forth, but we can certainly ask questions that need to be followed up on.
I was just going to suggest, Nate, that, thank you for your well-reasoned. Well-reasoned comment, and it's something that I think that we, at least a few of us have definitely had some conversations about and want to get started. If you wouldn't mind sending an email to the trustees, so we have your info, is that reasonable? That would be great. That way we can, we can get back to you if we discover, when we discover what we may or may not discover. I'll go ahead with my, my comments for the week. A lot of, a lot of interesting stuff, actually. Let's see. Christina and I met with some members of the H-Endly community regarding their desire to have some universal design stipulations, guidance in our building code. And I think what I would, I won't speak for Christina, but what I came away from after that meeting is, one, it's actually not that big of a deal. I think people conflate universal, universal design with ADA compliance, and it's not that necessarily. So I think there's a lot of stuff that we can, that we can think about, including eventually after we've, after we've passed this building code. But I'm looking forward to kind of talking with those folks more, learning a little bit more about some of those potential guidance, or that, that guidance, and going from there. Also, we had a meeting with the Carbondale Public Arts Commission. Just a heads up to put on your calendar, our June 5th Art Walk. I actually haven't seen much of the sculptures. I kind of stayed out of the voting. Felt like that was more appropriate at this point. But we were kind of in the works of putting together a lovely art walk on June the 5th with a lot of the artists. So that will be, that will be wonderful. One, sort of, basically speaking for someone who would otherwise have come and maybe addressed this at public comment, but I spoke to, to a constituent, and then also with Kevin here at the city, at the town, regarding a concern with the 72-hour parking issues and some, it becoming a bit of an issue for people who have legitimate automobiles that maybe don't feel like they should be moving them every, every 72 hours. And, and we kind of got to the point where, where we, we were, we were kind of brainstorming as to why the 72 hours exist, and it seems like it would exist only for, to provide parking access or to provide, or to mitigate for abandoned cars. And this is clearly not an abandoned car situation. And in terms of parking access, if we're going to kind of go that route, one, there's plenty of parking around the spot in particular, but two, there's a lot of spots around town where our right, town right-of-way, which should be available for parking, has sort of subtly, or not so subtly, been created by neighboring landowners not compatible with parking. So it's not fair to maybe, to give a ticket to someone who's, who's parking a spot where they otherwise could park when, when plenty of other folks maybe are not. So anyway, I just thought I'd bring that to sort of the attention of the board. I'm going to reach out to Chief Wilson, I think, as well, and maybe after that, reach out to board members. And then finally, just, just some thoughts on First Friday. I played some music at the Marble Distillery, saw some, some town folk there. I, I know there was an opening at the Launchpad, and there was a lip sync event at Core that my, my fellow trustee here may or may not have been a part of. And I just, just to reiterate how important the Core is to our Core, and that, you know, that life that we get on First Fridays, I know we can't continue that weekly, but it's, it's really heartening when we, when we get that critical mass and, and whatever we can do to, to focus our attention on that Main Street and know that it's always worth it. I think I'm going to just go there. Actually, and I wanted to say a brief thumbs up to the Parkinson's recognition. It's horrendous. It really is. I'm struggling with, with family member with Parkinson's. And just a shout out to those folks who, who assume, maybe like we did, that it starts with tremors. It doesn't. It doesn't have to be. Some of the, the main symptoms don't, don't necessarily have to be the ones that are most prominent. And I want to offer my empathy and sympathy to those who are also dealing with something like that in their family. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Ross. Colin, do you have any comments tonight?
Oh, sure. So I attended the, well, as you know, we have two mobile home parks up for sale in our region. One in Basalt, one right behind Honey Butter. So the residents from the Mountain Valley Mobile Home Park met last Wednesday at Third Street Center. Roughly 80 people showed up and talked about what they'd like to do. Fortunately, they have a legal team that's helping them, a local legal team, and they invited Thistle Rock, which is a nonprofit developer that works with mobile home communities to help them purchase themselves and become a resident occupied community. So Thistle Rock, there's a Rock USA, it's a national consortium. And so the Thistle is a member, and they came up. They've done 11 to 13 mobile home park transitions in Colorado. Very informative, very useful. The good news is the group is self-organizing. They'd like to put in an offer. They have a legal team, and there are some organizations that work on this. The challenge is that it's $18 million. So they're trying to figure out what they can do, more to come, and there's some ongoing meetings. So just want to let you know that they are, they are working away on that, in that regard, and that's all I have.
Thanks, Colin. We'll just keep coming around. Chris, any comments tonight?
I was just going to mention that Colin seems to have gotten way more into it already, which is good to hear. But I just feel like that is clearly in our zone of interest, and I think the town should be ready to participate in whatever manner is appropriate. To me, it does feel like something where, you know, if it makes sense, I think like an annexation situation could be, could be merited in that situation in order to potentially allow them more density or something like that to allow, in order to get a bank involved or something like that. But I think definitely we've already made investments that sort of signal that, that are, that are sort of oriented towards that part, part of town in terms of requiring all that whole new bike path and then building that crossing. Those are all actions, I would say, that sort of assume that that's in town, but that none of that's actually in town. And I think if it makes sense, I guess, in terms of greasing the wheels of some kind of deal for the residents, I think we, we should be willing to do something fairly quickly if we have to. I know that there's, time is of the essence, so.
Anything else, Chris?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, thanks. Erica? Okay, Jess, Christina?
Um, no, just about the Universal Design Workshop or meeting that we had. It was great that we had constituents meet with us. And sometimes it seems a little overwhelming, but it was, we were lucky to talk to them a little bit more about education and training around it. And so I was more hopeful about that. And like I said, I know we have a big, a big, you know, moves going on with building and coding, but it does seem like the Universal Design won't be that overwhelming once we pass, once we go through that. I've been out of town. I missed the Latino Advisory Board yesterday, but I did see the notes that we have a new member, so that's exciting. So hopefully that member will be on our consent agenda, maybe next meeting. And thanks for mentioning the mobile homes. I've been hearing a lot about that, you know, through, through the community. So looking forward to. So looking forward to see what else comes up with that. So thanks, Colin. That's it.
Great, thanks, Christina. Thanks, everybody, for those comments. Just a quick update on the town manager search process. Mayor Pro Tim, Erica Sparhawk and I met today, just had a phone call with our consultant from KRW, Mark Collins. Sounds like we're getting a really strong, very good pool of applicants already, as well as lots of conversations with other people, some in the area and some outside the area who are interested. So I think that puts us in a really good position. And what we asked for out of that meeting was kind of a draft timeline that'll show us. You know, we know that the application period is open until April 25th, which is why right now it might feel like, you know, how are we being involved? Well, we're waiting right now for people to apply. So there's not really anything for us to do as a board right now, but we want to stay engaged. And so Mark is going to dial in to our work session next week, share that timeline with us probably ahead of time. Hopefully by the end of this week, hopefully it's in the packet. And then we can ask any questions about that timeline and process and really start to kind of block out some dates for, for the in-person part as we plan our spring and maybe even early summer travel and stuff like that. So really good update, felt, feels very much like it's on the right track and that the pay range that we identified from our existing salary schedule is appropriate and attracting high quality candidates and the, the job ad and things like that. And then, of course, people do, you know, additional research and they learn all about the town. And a lot of people are already familiar with the town and want to work with us. So that's great. I would imagine some of those people are probably watching our video tonight. We want, we want to assure everybody that this would be a great place to work. Any questions about that process? What's going on? I think having that timeline will be really helpful.
Thanks for working on that.
Thank you. Okay, that's all I had. Next. Oh, you know what? Before we move on, yeah, thank you.
We do have a student here.
One of our students of the month showed up. And so I think Ivy's here and is Eliana here? No, okay. Ivy, I'm going to get yours to just say. Ivy, Taney, you want to come up here? Come on up.
I don't know what I did to get it off.
What question would you get to a great idea? All right, great speech. Now I'll read, I'll read what your teachers had to say about you. This isn't making you talk. Your teacher said Ivy is reliable, dependable, helpful and an excellent role model. She is focused on achievement and her habits of a scholar are exemplary. She shows up each day with a positive attitude and ready to learn. It is a pleasure to have Ivy at Carbondale Middle School. Awesome drive, Ivy. Right, we're going to go on with our agenda. Ivy and your family, you're welcome to stay, but these meetings aren't the most exciting thing. So it's okay if you want to go. We're glad that you made it for your award. Moving on to, I believe, attorney's comments.
Okay, thanks, Mark.
Manager's comments.
Thank you. It's what happens. I came in here with one thing to say and now listening to you now I have three things to say. So bear with me. Firstly, and you may hear more about this from Eric this evening, but sadly, and I'm excited for her, but Margaret's last day is Friday. And then she's got some traveling to do around the United States and then she is headed to New Zealand. So congratulations to Margaret. Ross, with regard to your comment about the 72 hours and the ordinances, you may already know this from talking to Kevin, but just for everybody else's information, there are a number of ordinances that are either out of date or controversial and may need some adjustment. We have some attorneys and our police chief and a couple of other people meeting on April 18th to walk through some of those things and try to figure out what the right recommendation is to the board and when that will come to you. So that is in process and so hopefully that helps answer that question. Also to add on about the mobile home parks, in case you did not know, we have two trailers in that mobile home park that are being used for employee housing. And we currently have employees who live in them. One from Public Works and one from Town Hall. The town and city managers throughout the valley have also been meeting to talk about, you know, what might be appropriate for us to bring to our boards. And they also had a separate meeting with Thistle Rock and some of the, I don't know if you were in on that one, Colin, but some of the other local housing managers from different towns and more to come on that. So that's all of it in the same vein. So just wanted to let you know about that.
Is that all?
That's it.
Great. Thank you for the update. Moving on then to our action items, first being Clear and Holy Cross presentation regarding the geothermal initiative. So if you're here for that, come on up, join the Zoom if you haven't already. And we look forward to hearing from you.
Lauren, you can spin that mic around to you too, the one that's in front of your computer. You can kind of rotate that around. There you go.
Thank you all for being here. Yeah, make sure the green light, there you go. So we can start with introductions and dive right in.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and trustees. I'm Brian Hannigan, resident of Carbondale, 712 Maine, just around the corner from here. So it was a short commute tonight and I really enjoyed the opportunity to be here with my colleague Jeanette from Holy Cross and also Lauren from Clear. We're going to do two things for you tonight. One is we're going to give you a brief update on the clean energy progress that Holy Cross has been making. We're one of two electric utilities that serve the town and its residents. We serve mostly the area north of the Rio Grande Trail. And Excel Energy, who we partner with on a lot of things, serves the, the rest of the town. So we'll talk tonight about the things that we're providing. We are, unlike Excel, who's an investor owned utility, we are a member owned rural electric cooperative. So our governance is not through the Public Utilities Commission. It's through a seven member elected board that is selected from folks who volunteer. The, anyone who receives electric service can stand and run for the board and make decisions and hire and fire the CEO. So it's a truly open and democratic process that I think we can all be proud of. So I'll take a few moments to, to kind of give you a little bit of background on the screen about Holy Cross. You see our mission statement there on the left hand side, and I want to call your attention to four really important words. Safe, reliable, affordable and sustainable. Now, we view all four of those as legs on a four legged stool. And if you've ever sat on a four legged stool and you've sat on one corner to the, to the expense of the other three, you've usually found yourself on the floor. And so we believe that the most stable organization that can last the, the long term provides all, all four of those benefits co equally. And you'll hear a little bit more later on about the sustainability part, but I do want to take a few moments and just note that everything we're talking about in this clean energy journey has to be done in a way that is safe. Right? If our power supply injures people or injures our workers or starts wildfires in the community, it doesn't matter how clean the power is. If our power is not on, no one cares how clean it is. They just want the power back on. And lastly, if they can't afford it, if the rates are too high, they, they, they don't care about how clean it is. They just want the rates to be lower. And it's truth, no matter how low the rates are, our members are always going to want them lower. So we're always looking for, for cost savings. And I think the remarkable story, the headline here, is that we've been able to maintain our electric rates at about 11 cents per kilowatt hour, which is a good 40% below the national average and some of the lowest rates in the state of Colorado. We've been able to consistently improve our reliability by over 40%. Fewer outages over the last decade, in contrast to a national trend where we're seeing 50% more outages nationwide on average. Last year, we operated entirely without any lost time injuries in the workplace. We were one of the leaders in putting forward a wildfire mitigation plan that Excel and even the California utilities have embraced and adopted as we've all tried to deal with a drying west and an increasing risk of wildfire. And as you'll, you'll see on this slide, which is somewhat dated now, in 2023, we provided 50% of our power supply from carbon free energy resources, mainly wind and solar and batteries. At the end of 2024, that number was 75%. And I checked before I came tonight and year to date, we're up over 80% for the first quarter of this year. And that's typically our, non-technical term here, most fossil-y portion of the year. Because our demands are highest, given the winter demands from all the folks coming to ski and do other good things. And so that means we're, we're tending to rely more on the regional power grid than on our own electric resources. Last year, during the month of October, for that month, we hit 90% for the first time ever. Again, at 11 cents with no lost time injuries, no wildfires, no safety incidences and pretty much top decile 10% reliability in the country. So it's a really good news story and it's one that we wanted to share with you tonight. And the 170 employees and I are very proud of that. How did we do it? Well, we were very fortunate in that we embraced a strategy of decarbonization well before the pandemic, well before supply chain issues, well before the tariffs, well before any of the other things that you've been hearing about in the press that have led to kind of the general inflation that we've seen. And so if we were to try to do that today, I doubt that we would do it with the same amount of success. But we've, we've embraced energy efficiency. We've moved to cleaner sources of wholesale power from Excel and another wholesale market participant named Guzman Energy, active in the West. We've developed a number of local clean energy resources, going all the way back to the Sunnyside Solar Array. That was one of our first. And we've brought those forward now and scaled them up, most recently with a 10 megawatt solar farm in the parachute area. Another one planned coming on in Rifle at the end of the year to add to the one that came on last year at Spring Valley. All of those are connected to batteries that allow the solar and the batteries to act to sort of throttle and break the amount of electricity to put onto the grid to help us meet supply in a very flexible and a cost effective way. We've also been a statewide and even a national leader in distributed energy resources, not just solar on the rooftop, but batteries in the home. We have a, a program called Power Plus that basically offers Holy Cross members the opportunity to get a battery system, not just a battery, but the whole system added to their home or to their business for, you know, in the typical case, on the order of about $15 extra per month on your bill. And we do that through low cost financing, through rebates, through the federal investment tax credit. And by partnering with our members to actually use that battery to help us balance the variable supplies of wind and solar and paying our members a bill credit for that privilege of using that resource. We're looking at expanding that program now into other flexible energy uses, whether it's electric vehicle charging or heat pumps that are becoming increasingly important in new construction and in retrofits. If it's flexible, we'll pay for its flexibility. Because as you'll see in a moment, that's the key for us to move from 80% to 100%, which is our goal by the end of this decade. It's among the most aggressive utility goals anywhere in the country. And, and lastly, at the heart of this and what, what Lauren will talk a bit more about, the opportunity that we have is to look at smart electrification. How do we take where we use fossil fuels today, replace it with electricity in a way that's smart? Saves money, saves emissions, creates greater value, you know, has less environmental impact. Particularly in transportation, we're seeing this in electric vehicles for passenger cars, but we could look at trucks. We could look at delivery vehicles. We could look at rail. We could look at a variety of other options and we are. And then building heating and cooling is really a great opportunity with heat pumps that either draw from the air or they draw from the groundwater or the ground surface in the form of geothermal energy networks. And we'll say more about that towards the end. So how have we gotten here? We've gotten new wind resources from eastern Colorado, new solar resources in partnership with another electric cooperative on the Front Range. Those are the two bullets there at the top. And then I, I mentioned a number of our projects, the solar plus storage arrays, additional hydro from the Grand Valley and then a new solar farm, while it's not so new anymore, the solar farm between Woody Creek and the Aspen Airport, which is now increasingly looked at as possibly powering a microgrid for first response and critical infrastructure in and around the airport. As we see things playing out and as the remainder of our power comes from the Excel system, which itself is greening up by order of the state and order of the PUC, we're looking at getting to about 90% by the end of the year on a sustained basis, which is awesome. Right? There's not that many utilities in the West that can say that who don't have hydro or geothermal as their main resource. And then if we did nothing further, if we just rode the coattails of Excel, by the year 2030, we plan on being between 95 and 100%. And later this year, we'll issue a request for proposals that will solicit new projects, maybe some longer duration energy storage, maybe some geothermal power generation. We'll be looking for things that will fill that last 5%. But I'll tell you, those will probably be more expensive than what we pay for today, so they'll raise rates. And what we'll have to do is we'll have to look at all of those demand side flexibilities, particularly around things like electric vehicles and heat pumps to help us balance the oversupply and the undersupply, which inevitably happens when you use wind and solar. Even today, we're seeing times where we've got too much wind to support the electricity demands of the customers that we serve. Right now, without anywhere to put it, we send it to the market, we pay somebody to take it away. It's like the excess trash that you haul off at the end of the day. The sad part is, is we've paid for it and we pay for it again when we give it to somebody else. So it's a really bad economic and a bad environmental thing, because as you see here on the slide, on the pink and the gray, in the overnight hours, when maybe the sun's not shining, the wind might be blowing or it might not, but people still need power. We've got to fall back on primarily natural gas to fill in the gaps. That's an inevitable consequence of being tied to a regional grid that's powered by a mix of resources you pull from whatever you have available to you. Wouldn't it be great if we took the area above the red line, which in this graph is the demand for electricity? And if we took that excess, instead of giving it away and paying for the privilege, we were actually able to store it for a little bit in a variety of ways. Store it in a battery, store it in water that's pumped up to a higher reservoir, store it as heat energy somewhere. Wouldn't it be great if we could take that, move it a few hours out of the midday solar peak into the evening when everybody comes home from work or from fishing or skiing or whatever and does their energy intensive activities? Instead of firing up those gas turbines, maybe we could use that stored renewable energy that we've already paid for. And so that's really the trick as we look at moving towards 100% and our utility becomes one where we're trying to orchestrate and balance. And if we're trying to do that in every home and every business, it starts to get a little complicated. And so part of our savings on our power supply have been invested in making a smarter grid that gives us a little bit more opportunity to do this kind of balancing to become increasingly clean. There's a variety of ways to harvest this flexibility. I'm an old lab guy. I used to work at the National Renewable Energy Lab before I came here. So I got a show a lab geek poster and that's, that's the one here. I've circled two areas for you. One is the residential and the industrial demand response. Those are the kinds of programs, the battery storage, the heat pumps, the electric vehicles. And then on the right hand side, I've circled one down there at the bottom, thermal storage. And that's what we really want to spend our time talking with you about tonight. Thermal storage offers an opportunity, one, to decarbonize gas, because we use natural gas, particularly in this area, a lot for heating. And it's really hard to think about using electricity for heat. I mean, we do it. I have baseboard heat. I'm all electric in my place around the corner, but let me tell you, it's inefficient as all get out. And Excel loves it when I crank up the knob every night at six o'clock on their peak, at their peak prices. Right? They love it. I hate it. Right? But right now I don't have another option unless. And I'll just, before I get to that, I was doing a little foreshadowing there. Before I get to that, this is a chart from RMI, Basalt-based group that does a lot of work on the energy transition. And and what they've done is they've estimated that, in this case, it's for the state of California, but they could just as easily do it for us, and they have. All the different colored areas here are contributions from water heaters, air conditioning. And we were meeting with an executive at Carrier earlier in the week, where they've now put a battery right next to an air conditioner. So that when the air conditioner starts up, instead of pulling from the grid, they pull from the stored energy in the battery, which might have been put there later, earlier in the day by a solar panel. And so it helps reduce that impact to the grid. We don't have to build bigger stuff because that battery is kind of that buffer, right? And so if you think about every appliance in the home or in the workplace doing this, whether it's residential or commercial, whether it's heating or cooling, whether it's water or lighting, you start to feel a lot of that flexibility that can help us balance supply and demand, particularly if it's part of a broader effort to decarbonize how buildings use electricity. We have typically talked about building energy efficiency. We've offered tons of rebates. We've done weatherization programs, air air sealing, blower tests, you name it, to make the buildings efficient. That only gets you so far, right? There's a lot of wasted heat as the meeting goes on tonight. It's probably going to get a little bit warmer from all the lights on and all the the human bodies in the room that are putting off heat, right? And if you had a temperature sensor, it'll be half a degree warmer in here by the time you're done. Some of that wasted energy can be recovered and reused through the form of what we call thermal energy networks. And and Lauren will say more about that in a moment. We can also partially electrify, replace the gas boiler with a heat pump, connect it to the thermal energy network, so maybe it's not pulling super cold air in and using a lot of energy to get it up to the level that you want it. But maybe it's pulling water that's been stored in the subsurface at a constant temperature year-round that is a much more efficient process. And hey, what if what if we took some of that excess renewable energy? And when we needed to put it somewhere, we actually put it into that thermal energy network and raised the temperature a couple of degrees so that in the afternoon, when people come home from the ski slopes and they want that heat, they're starting at a higher set point and they're using less electricity on peak to make it happen. There's a tremendous amount of progress if you marry a flexible, decarbonized building with a network that can support it. If you think about it, it's actually really simple. It's the difference between you trying to run your own electricity utility in your home with your solar and your batteries by yourself and you being connected to a grid where if you have a little bit more and your neighbor wants a little bit more, that grid can allow you to trade. Why would we do this with electricity and not also do it with thermal energy, with heat? And so this opens up a variety of possibilities, not only for, you know, replacing natural gas, which is the primary objective of a lot of folks. But for us, it opens up a primary opportunity for long-duration storage. Because once I put that extra renewable energy into the ground, I don't have to take it back immediately. I can store it there for days, for weeks, maybe even for seasons. And that makes a big difference to the economics of going all the way to a hundred percent. And so that's our interest in thermal energy networks. I know we'll talk more about that specifically tonight. But I'll say that the Board of Directors at Holy Cross, we've talked about this. And we believe that there's a role for the electric utility, whether it's on our side of the Rio Grande or on the other side of the Rio Grande, or maybe straddling both perhaps. There's a great opportunity for partnership here that can go a long way towards helping the town meet its overall climate objectives in a way that's reliable, affordable, and safe. So I'll stop there and I'm happy to take questions, but I'm also happy to turn it over to Lauren for the rest of the story.
Any questions before we keep going? I think it'd be good to hear the whole thing, probably unless somebody has a detail right there. Okay, let's keep going.
So Brian, thank you for sharing that with us. So I, oh, sorry. Can y'all hear me?
Yep.
Okay. I know you all have a packed agenda and so really if we could take eight more minutes, seven more minutes, are we on track? Okay, great. Building. We're all excited about that. This would just thought be a good opportunity to have Brian come and talk about. The utilities are the ballfield and the referee in what we're working with and all of these solutions. So we have Holy Cross, fantastic. We have XL and Black Hills. And wanted to just give you all a really quick update on the Third Street Center geothermal feasibility and design study that we completed with D O. And have background context from Brian and Holy Cross of why we are all in and continuing to push forward on this solution. And I would say still in scoping phase, but moving forward. And Colin, if I know Colin, you wear two hats, so please jump in. Yeah, thank you. So I've presented to y'all before about the Third Street Center feasibility study. We had a really fantastic opportunity with them. We worked with NREL, we worked with Gray Edge. It was an excellent learning lesson and we were going through this process at the Third Street Center at the same time that Steamboat, Picken County, Vail, Gunnison, municipalities from all over the state were also beginning feasibility studies. So we have a an excellent cohort that's formed. We were probably on the leading edge of this by about eight months and it's been a fantastic experience. So we submitted an application to the Department of Energy in November, actually it was October, to fund that project. We did not receive a funding award as y'all do, I think, know that we did not get that award. Nobody else got that award either. Really, you know, other other studies were awarded, but no one's going to receive money from that, most likely. We were able to glean a lot of useful information that is able to carry us forward to the next project from that. So some takeaways were the opportunity, but really the the challenge of building retrofits. So we were looking at a very old building that Colin works really hard to maintain and has been greening and greening and greening, and this would be the ultimate step for that. But we were competing against bids from contractors who were working in all of these resort communities, so no surprise there. The the determination of the team at the moment is to take a pause, take all of those lessons learned and find the next best site or the next best fucking opportunity to go forward with with that. It did create some fantastic decarbonization potential in the building and it was a good opportunity, I think, for all of us to engage with Holy Cross on this conversation about what does this look like when you want to do this and you're in XL territory and you're not in Holy Cross territory?
And I'll just weigh in on that. As I described earlier with our battery program, part of the value to the utility is being able to utilize whatever's at the home or the business or the facility, in the case of a commercial or industrial facility, as a flexible resource. If that flexible resource is drawing electricity outside the Holy Cross territory, part of that value chain is lost. And so we were interested and remain interested in being part of any forward project on the Third Street truly is a learning opportunity because we don't serve electricity there. It's potential, given that there's very little legislative or regulatory framework presently in Colorado as to who provides thermal energy networks. There's some pilot projects that XL is doing, not here, but in other places. There's one project that Eagle County itself is self-funding. And we're looking forward to learning more from that. So so there's a variety of creative opportunities and as you can see from this chart, we started thinking, well, where are the sources of waste heat that right now are being rejected, the atmosphere that might be harnessed and placed into this thermal energy network to help give it some economy of scale, right? And that was one of the challenges in the design work at Third Street Center was, on its own, really, the thermal capabilities were, it was a lot for a little, right? But if you expand the network a little bit and you combine it with the value of the flexibility on the electric grid side, maybe there's something there. And so I want to lay open the possibility that the next study might involve locations that are in Holy Cross territory as well as in XL territory. We haven't really talked with XL about this, but we'll see. But might also involve locations within the within the town and its surrounding area that have the opportunity to contribute waste heat. So think of wastewater treatment facilities. Think of larger gathering places that have a lot of heating load maybe during the day, but then are dormant overnight and can be used to sort of be thermal batteries, right? I think if we start thinking creatively from a full energy system perspective, there may yet be some things that we can work on together and and that's something that I think our board would be very, very keen to engage in. We're involved with Picken County in a similar discussion. We're involved with the Town of Vail in a similar discussion. And we've brought together on numerous occasions, all the folks that Lauren rattled off, including the folks from Steamboat, to figure out if there's a regional approach that can work. Because frankly, this is the most promising opportunity that we have to do anything substantial with gas utilization and existing or even new builds in the near term. And we should be exploring this with all the urgency that climate action requires.
Colin, do you have anything to add?
Well, I just would like to thank Brian for the vision and the leadership at Holy Cross. You guys really do set a very high standard and I think that helps the entire state's efforts in trying to achieve very ambitious climate goals. I wish there was a way that I could hop into your territory.
We do too.
Because all all the things that you do are exactly what I think most people in Carbondale would love to have, but you can't do it that way. What's I think really neat, and I think Lauren laid it out, we learned a lot in our efforts. It's always easier to do this from scratch. It's way harder to retrofit a building, especially a building as old as Third Street in the way it was constructed over multiple years. But I think what's really neat is because it's a rural cooperative and it's driven by the people who already live here, there's a strong ethic about trying to do more around clean energy. And Carbondale has served, at least a third of the town is served by Holy Cross. We do have some potential development coming forward on that Holy Cross side. Our wastewater treatment plant and our sewer plant are on Holy Cross. So finding ways to partner with Holy Cross and as we all talked about this earlier, XL wasn't interested. So what are we going to do? Is it the town? Is it Third Street? Either of those aren't that great, but to have a utility interested, this is what you guys do. I'm just really thrilled that you're willing to have the conversation with us and proposing some possibilities that we might consider. Beyond that, also from our building code perspective, that finding ways to incentivize some of this stuff going forward so that instead of it's just assumed a certain energy provider is going to do it, could we be thinking about opening it up so that a Holy Cross could then provide some resources that might make it even more exciting to go to thermal energy, tie into a thermal energy network as opposed to just natural gas or something like that? So I think really neat opportunities. Unfortunately, our federal government's kind of imploding, so our our sense of getting resources from them is going to be really challenging. But we have a great asset in our community already. And I think we can build on all the work we've already done to take it to that next step. So I really want to applaud you for all the work you've done. So thanks.
Well, thank you. And I'll share that with with the all the talented employees, many of whom live and work and play in in Carbondale. The other consideration I put out there to temper our expectations in the near term at least is we are seeing significant cost increases for everything. And that's before we see the full impact of some of the recent decisions on tariffs and trade and what have you. And so I, sometimes you have a really good idea and it's just not the right time. And you don't throw away the idea. You keep it for when the timing might be right. And I think that's the kind of conversation we'd look to to keep alive.
Great. Thank you, Brian. Thanks, Lauren. Thanks, Colin, for that comment. Any questions from the board, this group? Chris?
I would just, I would just, yeah, draw attention to the wastewater treatment plant and its eventual needs for upgrades and and definitely to keep you guys engaged in that as to how it might be. Yeah, utilized in the service of a thermal energy network to support our trailer park next.
There you go. And I'll just highlight Ms. Jeanette, her role. Jeanette Padocas at Holy Cross, she's one of our community energy systems representatives. And we have a program where if a community like Carbondale decides it wants to do something that involves substantial upgrades or impacts to the Holy Cross grid, we work collaboratively to find ways to lower the cost of entry if it's something that's going to help us meet our goals and help you meet your goals. And so Jeanette will be your your great point of contact when and if those conversations are ready to roll.
And Scott, you probably have already engaged with him. He's, I think, probably a great contact from our end to talk, keep talking about that stuff.
Yeah, we've been in contact with Scott and others from the community as well, but please always reach out to us. We're love to hear from you guys. We'd love to be involved from the design all the way up because the sooner we can get involved, the better. We can help plan and set it up for success for you guys and to align with what Holy Cross is trying to achieve.
I want to double-click on that, right? At the time that you're planning your upgrades, let's talk. Don't wait until you've done the eighty percent design and approved the budget and all that. We've had so many people come to us and they're like, well, and we've got this thing and now we want to make it green. And I can't help you now. There's too much set in stone. So the earlier that conversation can occur, the more creative we can be and I think the better outcome we can get. So keep that in mind.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, Christine.
Just, I'm curious, like, what research and development efforts are underway? Because I know, you know, we keep pushing it, but from your standpoint, Holy Holy Cross, what kind of research and development are you doing for long-term geothermal technology?
For long-term geothermal technologies, I I think the the thermal energy network technology, it's it's pushing hot and cold water around in a pipe. It's it's not that, not that sophisticated, but the same sort of smarts, the data analytics, the artificial intelligence for the controls. How much do you push? When do you push it? What temperature do you push? Where's the inputs and the outputs? Managing one of these thermal grids is every bit as challenging as managing an electric grid. And there's a ton of work that we're doing in that area with better sensors and better switching and better meters that can operate as little microgrid controllers, better software systems that are starting to allow the grid to maybe self-drive a little bit. So there's a lot of really cool things and by partnering with NREL, they were able to get into some of that and and see what the future holds. These first systems are going to be fairly rudimentary, sort of just getting them working. In fact, we may actually start to test these components at the laboratory first to see how they interact with the grid to make sure that if we build it, it'll do what we say it was going to do. But there's a ton of sophisticated R and D behind it, even the materials that we're going to have to put in the ground in order to have really good insulating properties so that we can hold the energy that we put in there. I think there's there's a ton of opportunities. So if y'all students, if you're interested in a career.
Geothermal.
You bet.
Great. Any other questions? Just just a quick one, and I think this might be this sort of like dumb questions for the for the community. Are the territories of of your organization and others set in stone, carved, defended? I mean, as as someone like probably two-thirds of Carbondale who has utility and the you know, it's I think it's to talk about this in a wonderful presentation. Thank you for making us smarter. You know, is there anything that we as a town can do to facilitate redrawing borders? I just don't know, but would like to be able to explain to neighbors why we can't do the cool stuff over on that side of the Rio Grande.
The great answer, great question, Trustee Chris. They are, they're not quite set in stone, but they're defended like they are. They they were set based on who was the first in the in the area to serve. And typically, the investor-owned utilities focused on the denser developed areas where there was a higher concentration of people to be served over the same infrastructure, so economy of scale. And either the rural electric cooperatives or the municipal utilities, in the case of a town, they kind of serve the residual, the outlying areas. So if you look at the map of our service territory, there's sort of hot pockets of XL and then there's us kind of around everything else. It is not impossible to to change territories, but there really has to be an awful gosh darn good compelling reason. And the Public Utilities Commission has to be the one to make the decision. So, you know. So, you know, if we were to do some work on thermal energy networks for which there are no franchise territories. And if we were to make a compelling argument that some electric service to that thermal energy network were necessary in order to make it go, and that thermal energy network was part of what the state wanted to see happen, one could start to put together an argument that maybe might, might not get defended by others very strongly.
Thank you.
All right. Yep.
Everyone, thank you, Clear and Holy Cross for all of your work on all of this over the years. Really appreciate it. I just wanted to plant, I think it's great to have the conversation early because, I mean, there is potential development right on the other side of the Rio Grande Trail from us someday. There's nothing in the works right now that we know of. But that would seem like a really logical spot where we could weigh in ahead of time and encourage that development to talk to you guys and do it from the, from scratch. Like Colin was saying, where instead of an existing building, if they're going to do a neighborhood, could this be an opportunity? So I think it's super, it's a relief actually to know that you guys are willing to even have that conversation early with that developer. So we could, if they ever come to our staff, we could ask staff to kind of direct them to you first before they even discuss anything. And then just along, I mean, I think seeing the evolution into the demand response elements that we need to implement, if there's anything that you think we need to do, whether that's encouraging, you know, providing incentives or that we have clear implement on our behalf, or if it is a code-related item, like, please let us know because we're trying to always kind of keep up. But we're also willing to push the envelope. We're adopting or looking at codes tonight. And they, these items aren't included, but if they need to be in the future, we're always willing to kind of be the first ones if we need to to implement it. So I just wanted to see, make sure you know that we are partners in kind of moving some of these exciting elements forward. So.
Thank you. Yeah. Building codes are very important. We're, we're looking at clean building codes statewide. We've got efforts in, in Picken and Eagle Counties, both looking at land use and building codes. I've been involved in both of those discussions. All I would say is to make sure that you are thinking about building codes that you want in five years rather than the building code that you absolutely minimum need today. There's a lot of technology that is evolving that's right on the cusp. And it's not very difficult to imagine saying, hey, if we're going to have, if we're going to meet our climate targets, we want to make sure that our buildings are net zero carbon by a certain date. And in order to do that, we need a certain amount of buildings with self-generation from solar. We need batteries to go along with it. Because as you saw on the chart, the last thing I need at noon on a sunny day is more solar. That just makes the problem worse. But if I had flexible appliances, I had heat pumps, they were connected by thermal networks because it was a new build and we put that in the first time. That helps, by the way, obviate the need for additional gas supply, which prevents you from having to go and dig up an eight-inch pipe or a 12-inch pipe and replace it with a 16 or a 20. Right? And, and in an age where we're trying to move away from gas, you know, XL and its, or Black Hills and its gas capacity might thank you for the demand response that obviates that capital need and maybe allows them to redirect that capital to other portions of the system. And so I would say, let's, let's have those building codes with those thoughts in mind. Like, what is the end and where are we trying to go? And lastly, I would plead you to try to not deviate too far away from the county areas, from the state codes. Because I, just anecdotally, the developers and the builders say to me, that's probably their biggest frustration is that depending on where they are, they could be 50 feet one side of a jurisdictional line and it's a completely different set of rules. And that doesn't help with the economy of scale and the investment that we need. Thank you.
Well, that's two items away on our agenda. Thank you guys so much for the work that you've done and the partnership and the information tonight. And we look forward to hearing from you sometime in the near future.
Happy to come back. Thank you for your time tonight, y'all.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Next item on our agenda this evening is the Carbondale Aquatics Center Monthly Report. Wember and A.D. Miller four-week construction schedule. Looks like we have some folks here in person, which is great. We appreciate you all being here. And hopefully we can have a constructive conversation about what the board needs as far as being able to keep up with this project and do our part with oversight and what's going on out there. So maybe we could start with some introductions and kind of walk us through what you provided. And then we can ask some questions.
You bet. Thanks.
Make sure that's green, green light on that one.
There we go.
Yep.
Okay, excellent.
Thanks, Eric.
So we're going to start tonight, we'll, we'll introduce my name, Eric Brumming, our project director.
Hey, I am Brian Brumming. I'm the Aquatics and Health and Wellness Coordinator.
Hey, guys, I'm probably the only new face. I'm Joe Farstead. I'm with Wember. I'm the regional kind of team leader. You guys, Chris departed the company, so I'm stepping in for him. And then we have another team member joining that you will probably see next month. That will be the, the lead on this. So good to meet you all.
Yeah, nice to meet you too. Thanks for being here in person.
We'd love to start with a little presentation of where we sit with our Let's Make a Splash campaign. And I'm pretty excited about the, the recent efforts that we've, with our marketing campaign and just the returns on, on that investment. So we'll share that with you.
Yeah, so our capital campaign is well underway still. Our fundraising has gone up to 1,660,604. So we're pushing along and continuing to do some fundraising. Last month, we had $8,000, over $8,000 collected through online donations and even more collected through our mailers that went out. What you guys have in front of you there is our tri-fold that went out. This is the tri-fold for everyone on the screen to see too. Front and back, our push with this, this time around was to focus on where we are at in the project, what's coming in the project, and then who's donating and why they're donating. Our big push at that is to get who's involved in the community involved in this project even further for those that have made those donations. And then answer those quick F A Qs that we always hear of, you know, why is the pool under construction and why are you guys fundraising right now? And then with that community involvement, we've took it a little further and have asked people to write letters to the editors. We've taken the, we've had six of those so far, including one from Ben. We just submitted one to. Malcolm McMichael helped with our solar grant, correct? He helped with the solar grant and so he wrote a letter to the editor specifically talking about the pool's green initiatives. And then additionally, on top of that, we're going for a push in social media. And that's a focus with those testimonials, again, a lot, why people are donating. We have over 15 testimonials already. We're spreading those out across social media so that we can, you know, continue to be in the face of people and hit a whole new market with this social media push. Additionally, we're looking at involvement. We were just at, we had a booth at Spring Into Wellness on Friday. We're going to be at the upcoming first Fridays for May, June, and July, at least to start with. We're doing another booth at Super Slicker and Wine there. Wolfender is doing a alumni celebration too, as they transition into something new for them that they have talked to us about partnering as a Let's Make a Splash campaign from their involvement in the pool over the many years that they've been there. And then we have a return pool parties again. We've got two on our agenda. And hopefully going to add more as ways to seek out for their donations.
Fantastic. And I'll, I'll just add kind of where we are with our 2.5 million goal for the Let's Make a Splash campaign. So we have, to reach that goal, we have a balance of $840,000 to try to reach that goal. Out of that $840,000, we are still writing grants and still looking for additional money from even private foundations and, and public foundations and, and other sources. And so right now, as far as what's out the door and grant asks, we have about $330,000 in grant asks out. So not, not money in the door yet, but, but the ask is, is being made. And, and so that would bring us down to about, you know, $510,000 to raise to, to recycle. So, and then we also are definitely going to look at the direct pay tax credits on some of our renewable energy sources of this building. Those wouldn't be available until after we're functional. So, but they, they could backfill some of our reserves and rec sales new stacks. And it might be a great way to, to, you know, kind of end the project, get ready to operate the project. So.
Great. Thanks for the update on the fundraising.
Yeah. We'll, we'll go into Wember's report now and just kind of share with you where the project is and, and the finances of the project.
Yeah, thanks, guys. And I don't know who's driving the screen. Unfortunately, I'm not sharing. But is, is there a way to put the report up there for people's benefit? Well, you, you guys have it, right?
They have.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. So I'll just.
You can share your screen, but you need to sign into that.
Oh, man. That seems like a lot of work. I might stumble. I don't want to do that right now. I mean.
Yeah, they have it in front of them.
Yeah. So project update summary, guys, just first page. Obviously, you guys have already viewed this, so I can, I can talk through it a lot or talk through it a little. I'll start with small bites and, and we can elaborate if we want to. But pools are cast, forms are stripped, underground infrastructure is going in to serve the pools, water, waste. The backwash tank has been cast. Everything is in good shape there. And we've recently actually cast the footers for the new pool house. So we are, we are literally and truly ready to come out of the ground, which is a huge milestone. So that's, that's exciting for us. You know, landscaping, working with the arborist, relocated some trees. I think we found a good solution for the wet well recently with the town arborist. So I think that's a win as well. Permitting ASI 3 is still in for review. We expect that back in a couple of weeks. And I don't, I don't expect any issues with that. Weekly meetings are same as usual, 10:30 on Thursdays. You know, Chris did do a note in here, sorry, for the, for the benefit of the group. I didn't put this together. Chris did put this together, so I familiarized myself with, with the project before. But PV panel system, the new Trelis, five to six months. Yeah, it's a, it's a potential risk knowing that we are going to turn this over in October. But I also don't feel like it's something to be concerned about because the long lead items are going to be last in, right? You know, we can allow for everything that needs to be there without being, without needing infrastructure there before we finish the building. The building can be finished and we can plant this. So it's something to consider and it's worth noting, but I'm not concerned about it at all. Moving down into the budget stuff, guys, I want to, I want to preface this conversation just by saying, you know, it is our job as your owner's representative to make something legible that you guys can all understand. And I understand that there has been some feedback saying that we want to see a cost to complete. We want to see a few other items that aren't in this. So I will apologize on behalf of Wember and say, I want to clean this up for you guys. So I'm going to talk through just the table. Current budget, committed cost, projected to complete, projected over, under, incurred costs. I want to revise this and I also want some feedback from you guys to say, this is how, if I put my, I am a trustee or a council member's hat on, I want to see the current budget. I want to see changes in the budget to date. And then I want to see commitments. And what a commitment is, guys, just for the benefit of the group, is a commitment is a contract that has been signed, a purchase agreement that has been signed. It is something we have committed to. It doesn't mean we've spent the money. It just means that we have committed to, to spend those dollars. So I think a committed cost and then a balance to complete. And the balance to complete is a good reveal because it says we have this much left in the project with our committed costs. And then an over/under just says, hey, we have a little bit of money left over in this budget. We're a little bit over in this budget. The final balance says thumbs up. So that's how I think this should be presented. And with your permission, we'll do it better next month. But I want your feedback in the interim too, guys. You know, talk to Eric. You guys should all have my contact info. And if you don't, I can make sure it gets disseminated before the next meeting. One of the other comments that I heard was the, I guess, don't want to use the same word again, but the legibility of the owner's contingency log. So I want to talk through this briefly. And if I am monopolizing this conversation, let me know and I'll stop. But the contingency log is a reflection of a starting balance and then all of the additions and subtractions from that. So when we're thinking about the cumulative budget, guys, the, we have owner's requirements, construction costs, contingencies, you know, survey, all of these nuances in there. The only line item in the budget that isn't a potentially allocated or a, money that we have allocated for a specific purpose is contingency. That's why we call it contingency. So if there are any movements of dollars in our budget, it's going to come from or go to contingency because the other lines are committed. So that's why this document is kind of tricky. Oh, hazmat consultant, why did we spend money there? It was because we didn't have a budget for that originally. So we took it from contingency. And I'm not going to go through all of these, but that is what this document is showing you guys. And so that's why, looking at this at face value, I understand it. But if you want to talk about, you know, public utility, infrastructure displacement and use, that gentleman over there is probably a better resource, you know? We're not, we're not all an expert on this type of stuff. So that's what this document is reflecting, but I do think there's a better way to display this as well. One of the other comments was a, what are the change order values doing to the budget? And the answer is, the budget is not changing cumulative. You know, our construction budget is X amount of dollars. If we need more money here, we're taking contingency dollars and transferring it there. If we underspent money here, we're taking money from this budget and replacing it in the contingency budget. So that's why the contingency has a lot of ins and outs. But the other lines cumulatively are changing as well to reflect that. So that was a pretty long-winded approach. I just want you guys to understand the origin of this document. But I also think there's a way to make it more legible. So any feedback you guys have on what you specifically want to see is, is greatly appreciated because we'll, we'll make it look however you want it to look. So.
Okay. Anything else before we ask questions and give feedback? Okay.
Yeah, that was, that was the lion's share of what I wanted to share, guys. So appreciate your time.
Okay. And so you're saying, Joe, you're, you won't be our Wember representative long term. So we'll have our third, I believe, person from Wember coming on shortly.
I, you know, I, I said that casually, but I, I am the lead for the mountain region. And because of this bait and switch technique you've endured, I will be, I will play an active role in this project for the duration. But because I'm also managing the rest of the projects for Wember in this valley, I won't be at every meeting, but I will be the resource for, for RPM.
Okay, thanks. Just opening up to the board questions. And Joe specifically requested feedback on what we'd like to see in the next report, which I think we gave a lot of feedback last time on what we'd like to see in this one. Did they meet the mark? What else would we like to see? And what questions do you have about the project? We don't have a ton of time on this, so let's, let's dive right in. You want to start?
Sure, I'll start.
Okay.
I think that the, the table, it sounds like you're going to update it to a, a better, more legible version of that. I have some questions about the owner's contingency log. It seems like this line 29 increase in fundraising goal budget, I'd like to understand why we are counting that toward our contingency when it is not money that we have yet. I've never seen a contingency log like this that, that moves money in and out of line items in the owner's contingency. Normally that happens in the construction budget and not in the contingency. So I'm confused about that. I didn't run the numbers, so I didn't take the time to actually do the math. But it seems confusing to me that we are spending, that our starting balance was 637. Our ending balance is 657. And we're including this 900,000. So if we take the $900,000 out, are we negative?
Yes.
So I, I would like to understand how that happened. And I'd like to understand, is there a better way to present this information without all of this? I, I don't, I don't know. This is what I do for a living, so I understand contingency logs.
Yeah.
And I don't understand this.
Okay. So the 900,000 is obviously indicative of a fundraising goal. And I do not know, I dare say it was like this when I got here, but I do not know why we assigned it as a fundraising goal budget, but I think it's applicable. We are raising money. We're well underway as, as Brian demonstrated earlier. But in the absence of assigning it to contingency, we could assign it to any other scheduled valley we wanted. We know that the project needs contingency. We're going to run into stuff, right? But if we are doing a fundraising effort and we already know. But if we are doing a fundraising effort and we already know we're going to spend this much. On furniture fixtures and equipment, we're going to spend this much that's already bought out. We need a place to apply the dollars. So that's why we said the fundraising dollars, the nine hundred thousand, will put that much towards contingency. So that's where that value came from. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, the math makes sense. I'm a little disappointed that. This is the first time the board has been made aware that the contingency looks like this and that these nine hundred thousand. Imaginary hopeful dollars are being applied to our contingency to make up for. A a negative balance at this point in the project. I'm not completely sure what percentage complete we are because that's also not showing on here in construction, but I'd like to understand. What percentage complete we are on the project as a whole, because I I'm really nervous. That if we don't make that nine hundred thousand dollar goal, that now we're negative and we're fifty percent through the project. I know we're through a lot of the risk in the project because we're through excavation, but. I am sort of stunned that money is being spent and transferred back and forth on a project. Where we're now in the negative, and this is the first time the board has heard about it.
Right, yeah, no, I get that. And I guess I should say that there's a lot of different ways to manage a contingency budget and. In my professional experience, and I guess the way Wember has done it and represented it and. You know, showed it to owners, this is how we do it. We say we're moving money here, but contingency is. The landing pad and the launching pad. If we have dollars from a fundraising campaign, they need to go somewhere goes to contingency. If there's an overrun on a line, it comes out of contingency. So that's what Chris was trying to reflect with this. With with the way he put the spreadsheet together, but if it's not the right way to reflect it, I'm again happy to revise it, yeah.
I think it's. I I don't know that this is Wember's fault, but as I I'm just.
Yeah.
Like if we if we don't make that nine hundred thousand dollars, we're fifty percent through the project and and we're negative in our contingency.
Yeah, I think we need some clarification there because we fully funded the project from reserves, from both the rec fund and the general fund. And had a lot of discussion around that, and then the the fundraising goal is so that we don't have to dig as deep into those reserves. As we thought, so can either Lauren or Eric or somebody from staff help us understand? Because I would share Jess's concern if I didn't think we had fully funded the project without fundraising.
Well, that was going to be my comment is, yes, it's a fundraising goal, but there's a backup plan for if that. If it's not all raised through fundraising, it's not imaginary dollars because the board has already committed. To take that money from somewhere else. Whether or not it belongs in this particular spreadsheet. Is a completely separate question, but it's not imaginary money because the board voted to. On that backup plan that said, if we don't make our goal, if we don't make the. Additional whatever it is, eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Whatever the gap is, we'll fill from X. So. I would caution against calling it imaginary money because, yes, it's a fundraising goal, but the money has been committed by the board. It's just where is it going to come from?
But it's not fundraising money in that case. It's general funds. And at this point in time. It's town money. Right?
Yeah.
At that point in time, it's not fundraising.
And so maybe we should call it, you know, fundraising goal slash also committed. I mean.
Yeah.
Because that's what what just occurred to me in this discussion, which I had lost in my.
Town town contingency, you know, don't call it contingency because that would just get confusing, but.
Yeah.
But yes, that was part of the backup plan.
Right.
That we talked about about the ad alternates, and whether or not it was a risk to commit to those.
That's what this explanation helped me understand is also, this is where the adults that we approved landed. Because I see the five hundred and seventy six thousand and I hadn't. That didn't click just looking at it on its own, but now I'm understanding how this is working a little bit better. So this is where the additional funds that we've approved and then. Have hope to fundraise to offset some of those are landing. And then this is where the adults that we approved in December are landing in addition to. The little, the little things that we don't see.
Nuances.
Right, and if the nine hundred thousand wasn't in here, then the five hundred and seventy six would not.
Be in there either.
Way to pay for it.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, and we wouldn't have included them, like if we hadn't included that, so, okay, that's helping me understand this. But I think that shows you that maybe we could use a little bit of clarity going forward as we track this.
Yeah, I mean, this one, you know, I I had the same thing when I looked at this. I'm like, hold on, you know, how does this all work here? How do we have additional, you know, contingencies? Joe explained to me, it's almost like a timeline of decisions of the project, right? And and so when I looked at it in in that vein, I I started to be able to understand. The decisions that have been made along along the path of this entire project. And where some of these, you know, transfers came from, you know, decisions that were made. And and a combination of change orders too, you know, it's one number there. But it's a combination of decisions that are added to to some of those line items there, so that that helped me kind of understand. Why it why it's why it's represented this way. And it's the history of of the the project, really, you know, and and where that money came from to. To get us to where we are, to to a fully funded, you know, build as a design project.
Can I can I step in for a second? As someone who's not in the business, my understanding is that contingent, like when I think about contingency. Rightly or wrongly, I think of it as, this is the log where we see what cost more than what we planned on. What cost less than what we planned on and what we didn't plan on that might be small. In that in that case, I could see where the adults, while that didn't wasn't planned originally. That doesn't necessarily, I could see a a a log or or something outside of contingency that 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 accounts for that without without. Without messing with the bottom line, which is, are we doing better than we thought? Are we doing less than we thought? And 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 that's what I would like to see. I thank you for bringing that up because that that didn't add up until just now. But we, if there could be a a quick in out if you wanted to, or like a change was made, but that would be, that would zero it out. If we agreed to pay. Five hundred and forty thousand dollars for this set of adults, great, that's now that. That five forty six thousand is is in the system, you know, and and are is it going to cost more or does it cost less than that? And and that's now what we're looking at as a bottom line, but this whole idea of. At of of including fundraising numbers in there or adults, I think just really complicates the fact unless I'm completely wrong.
I just, normally when you make a decision about an adult. It gets added to the construction budget, not to the contingency, not to the owner's contingency.
It did get added to the construction budget. It got removed from contingency. So it's contingency is is the fund that we that we transfer money from to fund other sources. So that's that's the the deduct you're seeing there.
Are you, Joe, hearing us though? And I I mean, I agree. We all have different levels of experience with this, and mine is somewhere in the middle, having been on the owner's side of some some public projects before, but. I've never been this confused before.
Yeah.
And generally, I've seen, yeah, construction budget, change order log and contingency log. And there's sort of three separate tables and they're really easy to track. And you see, oh, big change order, five hundred and forty thousand dollars. Cool, it's added to the construction budget and we added funding there. And then contingency, I think I understand it the way Ross does also. It's for those unexpected things that, you know, we found some problem in the soil and we had to do some work there.
Absolutely.
Rather than it's just the general in and out of every single decision that's been made, because this is kind of impossible to follow, Lauren.
I I was just going to say that I think part of this is, and I'm. Just had a light bulb go off in my brain, but I think part of the problem is that. We're defining these words differently, including. If you if you didn't know that the five hundred and seventy six thousand dollars was for the adults. What is owner's escalation? What does that mean?
Yeah.
Right? Like, we don't have the definition, so we're not speaking the same language. So when we're talking about a contingency log, exactly, we're talking about. Yikes, we had to sort, we had to sift out all those rocks and now this costs seventy six thousand dollars more. And that's why we have contingency for those emergencies, not for the things that we've decided are getting added to the budget.
Right.
So is this, is that?
Yeah.
Makes sense? I think it's how we're defining these terms.
Yeah.
You're calling it owner's contingency, but that's not what we're thinking about.
Yeah.
As a contingency.
No, I mean, for the record, guys, I invited an open dialogue. This is exactly what I needed.
Okay.
This is so good. No, everybody's comments, and I think, you know, Erica explained my five minute dialogue in about two seconds. Jess, your input is greatly appreciated, and Lauren, thanks for doing the final ciphering, but yeah, no, this is exactly what I needed, guys. And I'm gonna, you know, for what it's worth, myself and Tammy, new employees, gonna take these comments, do a draft. Eric and I will work through it, Lauren, give you a look at it as well before the next meeting, and we'll say, yeah, this feels right.
Is there anything on here that to highlight that it that meets our definition of contingency as as it's commonly understood? That was sort of a really unexpected unbudgeted cost that did get subtracted from the six hundred and thirty seven thousand dollar. In owner's contingency.
Man, it just goes back to the naming convention a little bit, Ben, because everything on this, you know, in in. Historical precedent for a lot of projects would be ineligible contingency use, but it's. We're using these words again that that you're not accustomed to. You know, I'm accustomed to seeing contingency as. More of a, more of a catchall for unexpected and for potential spends in the future. You know, you're you can reserve money in contingency for the alternates. If you get halfway through the project and you say, wow, we still have enough money in contingency. We'll spend it on the ad alternates, you know, so it's not just that emergency backfill. It is, it is an allocation. Of uncommitted dollars for all things that aren't currently committed. But having this conversation, it needs to be broken into a couple different. Reporting methods.
So my question still is, is there anything that you'd like to highlight on here? That was a really unexpected unbudgeted cost, where we didn't add money to the budget to pay for it like we did with the adults. But, oh my gosh, big problem, we didn't expect it. So so that we understand, I think one of our key questions in these reports is, how are we doing on that six hundred thousand dollar plus contingency?
Right.
And we don't have that answer right now. So is there anything you'd like to highlight?
I mean, like a default case in point for contingency usage would be the material testing consultant, right?
So what row is that, please?
That's that's one and two, hazmat consultant, and then the material testing consultant. So I'm sorry, hazmat hazmat consultant was because we identified, well, we should probably do some tests on some of this existing material. Well, we didn't budget for that originally.
Okay.
So there you go. And then real testing consultant, that's what I call a scope gap. Oh, we didn't have a material testing consultant in the original budget. We should have, but we didn't, so we had to spend contingency to use it. That was asbestos related or? No, that's like third party testing. That's so, you know, material break tests, like concrete break tests, weld inspection, stuff like that, yeah.
Okay.
Is that, sorry?
I I just have a question. Where is the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar change order on these logs? Where is that going to come out of?
That is included in line, sorry, just a second.
And is this the one for the old backwash?
Yeah, backfill.
Yes, yeah, that's.
Didn't we talk about that and how that ended up here?
Oh, yeah, but they're just looking for the the transfer from contingency. That's line item thirty. That was a combination of the of the. Solar infrastructure, solar, and then backwash infrastructure, so that's line thirty. But again, that should be two separate.
So I think it would be helpful if we could see not a transfer from contingency to construction, but. Where are the change orders? So like a line or line item for PCO three.
Absolutely.
Line item for the next change order.
Yep.
Which I don't know when you want to talk about that change order.
Sure, let's do it right now.
I have a concern about the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar change order and our procurement policy. Where, why didn't that come before the board?
So we we did include, you know, kind of the backup on that in your packet, so. Because that's something we hadn't shown you before, you know, and as far as that.
Eric, so if I'm scrolling past all the pictures or is that another?
Yes, it's PCO number two.
It's the second attachment.
Thank you.
Yeah, prime contract potential change order, number two, rev two.
So our procurement policy says that change orders on a contract. Are over a hundred thousand dollars should come before the board. We don't have to sign them. But I'm just, I'm just wondering when that dollar amount was established and.
Yeah, this one, this, you know, I can kind of give you a backstory of this, and this is, it's a big, it's a long story on this one, right? So the 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 contractor actually designed it to code to our US.
We all know the backstory because we've talked about the backstory a few times. I'm just wondering when the dollar amount happened.
Yeah, when when we received this PCO number two and so.
In February?
Yeah, it was, when was this?
Yeah, it's a February.
Yeah, it's February.
Actually.
Twenty six, twenty twenty four. So November twenty six, it looks like, on the change line.
Yeah, the three fifty four is signed.
And it says dated two twenty five.
Two twenty five.
Right, but the top of that document says. Created date eleven twenty six twenty four. And we talked about that. I talked about that with Eric today, Jess, and you're absolutely correct. That should come before the board.
Yeah.
And the hundred and twenty thousand dollar credit, we knew about because of the conversation we had about VE, is that correct?
Yeah, that's where the VE landed, yep. And yeah, I'm I'm sorry, this should have gotten in in front of you. It it should have, and and it was one of those. You know, decisions need to be made, long story, long, long compilation of. Of variables and factors to get to this point and 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 then and decisions needing to be made. So so I think with our procurement policy, we need to really. Try to figure out when something like this is 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 foreseen to be coming at us. To figure out how to get it in front of you without stopping the project, you know, and and that's that's a challenge with the with something like this, you know, and. And, you know, and so sorry, we didn't get this in front of you. We we had the blinders on and we're going and we're moving forward with the project and didn't want to hold it up, and so those decisions. Were literally like, we need this decision now to to make this, you know, to not slow us down, so. And that's that's on me. I'll I'll take that one. Yep, so I wasn't thinking procurement policy. I was thinking project.
Three hundred and fifty, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a lot of money. We we spend a lot of time here debating. Numbers that are fractions of that and and making them, you know, debating heavily or hot with with much heat. Topics that that, you know, result in a thousand dollars this way or the other, or twenty thousand this way and the other. So to see that sort of just be be made kind of is, well, we just got to do what we got to do. I mean, that's. That's big money and there are other ways to spend that or or or. To consider spending it, and I think, you know, I think as an elected board, you know, we. People have placed in us the responsibility to take a look at those things and to maybe as as a group of eight, seven or eight people to, including. Parks and Rec, to come up with some creative solutions, or maybe acknowledge that that is what what it takes, but I think blinders are not appropriate in in this project or any. And it's really disconcerting.
I I'd also like to, just a suggestion, to make things maybe easier for Eric. Maybe change orders should go through Wember so that Wember can provide some sort of backstory. And their recommendation on how a change order is approved or not approved because they. They have the construction experience, they have the industry experience and how this stuff operates, and so. I I think it would be good to see a a change order with some sort of information from Wember and. That's partly your job too, to make sure that it comes to us when it needs to come to us, I think. Because Eric's not in out there in the field every day. Eric's, this is not his full time job to be out on the pool every day. That's why we have an owner's rep. So I would just encourage some sort of better communication regarding change orders.
Yep, agreed.
May I just say something really quickly, and I don't know if this is actually a thing. But when I'm reading all the line items on this change order. Maybe it's just not detailed enough, but some of these things seem like they needed quick action and other things, maybe not. Landscaping and irrigation commitment. Landscaping and irrigation commitment, what is that? Is that something that needed to happen two months ago? Or is that something that could have, you know, the, the urgent thing? And you're not gonna know this, Joe, obviously, because you were involved, but if there's something that's more urgent, maybe it can be broken up into different change orders where if it's something a little more urgent, then boom, it's simple. It doesn't take from November to February to get it in front of the town where the work, the excavation for that backwash tank had to already start.
Yeah.
Right? But the landscaping irrigation, if, if it's what it looks like on here.
Yeah.
Some of that maybe could have been a little more delayed and, and not so much in a rush. And it would have enabled a quick change order to come to the board as opposed to as big as this is.
So it sounds like, so it's like you have some pretty clear feedback here on formatting for the tables. Really clear PCO log, clear construction budget and percent complete and, and to completion and or left to finish, whatever you call it, balanced finish. As well as the um contingency log and then to bring change orders to us. I don't think they should be, you know, a debate where we have to vote on every change order. We don't want to put ourselves in that position on a project that does need to keep moving forward, but we do need to be alerted to it and in compliance with that policy. And especially if it's impacting the overall budget. If it's like we changed from option A to option B, but it didn't really impact the overall budget. Okay, like if we had this three hundred, however many, three hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars in there, um, we'd be less concerned. But I think our concern is that we're gonna get to the end and have no contingency left. And um, you know, Joe, you have probably been brought up to speed on the fact that this has been a very hard project for us to fund from the very start. So that's why there's a lot of like tension and sort of anxiety or, or nervousness about our budget. Um, because it's about fifty percent over the amount that we asked the taxpayers for and that we originally budgeted. And we've had to overturn every stone um to be able to get it to completion. And so we're concerned that we're gonna be in a position of, of being asked for more. When we've already done that many times, um, or not be able to finish some key components of the project. So that's kind of the nature of this. And I think on a different project that was fully funded and hadn't run into any obstacles, this would all be a lot easier. But that's why this is very fraught right now. And so we need really clear communication and we need really frequent updates. And we need assurance that project's on track and we're not gonna be asked to find more money, essentially.
Yeah, no, understood. Well said, man. Thank you.
I also think, um, just a suggestion, you're trying to raise money, it might be cool to do a site visit with the trustees in hard hats and safety vests and take some pictures, get us out there. I don't know if the site is safe enough for visitors yet, but I think it might be a cool thing to do.
Yeah, it'd be great.
Yes, that's great. I mean, maybe after the, uh, the backfill's done, but kids too, bring kids.
I just. Say like, we've seen it. It, we're really excited about it.
I agree. Any other feedback or quick questions for the group before we move on to our big other agenda items?
And, and just so I paraphrase, as far as the, you know, I mean, we're still looking at our procurement policy. If we get a change order that's reaching that a hundred thousand dollar level, you know, you, you guys want to see it, definitely. And we'll, we'll make sure that happens. Um, you know what? Well, I learned something on this one. It was, it was not a big change order until it changed and affected everything on the project. I mean, I was amazed at how it, it trickled down, one decision trickled down to, to affecting, you know, the concrete that just affecting so many different pieces of the project. So, um, so that, you know, I, I learned a lot there. It's like, oh, that, that's an easy decision because it's the right decision and had no idea the impacts, the, the, you know, kind of spiraling impacts of that, of that decision, you know, that was made.
I think Jess's advice, that's what we need Wember for, because we don't expect you to have that expertise, but we do expect Wember to have that expertise.
Great, I heard, heard, heard loud and clear. Thanks.
Okay. All right.
I'll just add that I appreciate your, your attitude and, and a certain level of contrition and like willingness to meet us where we're at, where we're at. And I just really hope that bodes well for us going forward and wanting to continue working with you and stuff.
I, I think a site visit would be really neat because when I do a site visit there, I, you know, I get super excited. And I see the vision of, of this entire project and I, the, the towns, towns, people are gonna be so psyched. When we get this thing built, it's gonna be really amazing. So, so, and, and that, that comes from being on site and, and, and envisioning the future, so.
Great. All right. Thanks, everybody. Great feedback, good discussion. And thank you for being here and being here in person and, and taking ownership and, and looking for ways to move forward.
Yeah, no worries. Good to meet you.
All right, uh, I think we should have a five-minute break, uh, change gears here and get into our next discussion. I think building codes are next. Yep, so let's do that. Come back in about uh seven fifty-six. I'm glad we kept it positive because I didn't want this to be.
No, no, I, I will know. And I, 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 I did a little.
The city recovered from Duke's loss.
I saw the end of that, the one with the Houston.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah, that was the only way I did see it.
Yeah, I just happened to, I can't remember where I was, but I just happened to see the end of it for some reason, because I was just at the right place at the right time. Then I missed the final championship. Who won that battle? Is that when they won the national championship or was it?
Thank you, Joe.
Aaron, um, what do you need help with? Do you want those over here?
Joe, thank you very much. If you've been on my work from day one, you've all had smiles.
Yeah.
Which isn't, which doesn't mean you have to apologize for everything, but you're just like, understand, like, I understand this. And so, I think, I think. Frustration.
Sister-in-law and her sister, and my family lives in Carolina. Yeah, we're big, we're fans.
Was very, very, very similar to Brown. Brown was in the Ivy League final last year to go to the dance. I remember it specifically. They were up by nine, two twenty-six.
Yeah, that's very, that's almost exactly the same numbers.
Is that your team?
To our, let's dive on into our code adoption update.
Right.
Aaron, thank you for being here. I'm hoping we can get to a vote on this this evening. Um, and if there's some things that aren't perfect about it and we need to set them aside and come back to them later, I'd still like to approve um as much of this as we can tonight.
I think that would be amazing.
Okay.
First, I think there was some awesome things that happened tonight. Uh, it's great stuff with clear and holy cross. And there was some comments about universal design. I just want to update the board that as part of what I've been doing. I actually have another document in my computer right now that's for future code adoptions. That includes some universal divi- design stuff that I've been coming across by other jurisdictions and then just grabbing it and putting it into a place for the future discussions. So getting prepared for that as well.
Yeah, thank you.
And then we can talk about this. I felt like it might be good just to kind of give a little more background on myself and how code adoption works and in my opinion or my experiences. And uh then we can delve in a little deeper. Uh, so I know that a lot of, and I meant to mention that my buddy Fred over there, I didn't see him come in with a sword, so I'm really happy about that. Uh, so, uh, of course, many members of the board and staff and the public know who I am. But they may not know much about my experiences regarding construction industry or the application of building codes and as well as code development uh for amendments. Uh, seems like it'd be a good time to give you a little bit of that history. I was raised in silt. And when I was young, my family lived in a raised platform screen home while my parents built what was the first portion of my childhood home. While I was a little too young to participate in that, I did spend much time pounding nails in the wood and making things like wooden airplanes and similar items and growing up in silt. Uh, when I was fifteen, in order to get my own bedroom, I was actively in constructing in addition to the home. This was my real first experience in world of construction. And I guess I did a pretty good job because that addition still stands today. Uh, when I graduated high school, I had a few odd jobs and then I started a large roofing company. It was there that I learned about the management of water and the impacts of, on buildings when such systems were not properly constructed. Uh, and then in my early twenties, I started to work as a carpenter. It was here that I started to begin to understand the application of building codes. As they pertain to my. Uh, in two thousand, I attended my first ICC building code conference in Denver. This was the time when transition from the uniform building codes to the international building codes was starting to take place. And this was my first real interaction with many code professionals, a lot of whom I still remain in contact with today. In two thousand and three, my daughter was born and due to some medical issues, I started to work for a soils engineering firm. And it was there that I learned how the importance of managing water for soils properties. And uh, then in two thousand twenty, or in two thousand four, I was given an, an opportunity to take a position as a building and planning department administrator for the town of Parachute. When I worked there, I did a lot of different things, uh, managing permit applications for land use, taking minutes, attending board meetings. Uh, you could pretty much name it. I was involved. Then in about two thousand and five, I was given the opportunity to become a field inspector for the city of Glenwood. Oh, I should actually mention, when I started in Parachute, they were on the ninety-one uniform building codes. So one of the endeavors I took was to adopt two thousand and three codes. I had absolutely no experience in this and uh, I'm sure there were some things done there that probably needed to would have been done different if I knew better. Uh, but then I worked with Glenwood and at that time I got to have my second opportunity with code amendments. I was assisting the building official at that time. So a little different than my first experience. And then I worked there till two thousand and fourteen, which at that time I was the lead construction inspector. And I did a lot of work in hospitals and hotels as well as residential construction. And I started my own company, worked there for eight years and it's to work here. So when I actually started to do code amendments, took a lot of that experience. And the first thing I did was evaluate the codes amendments that were created for the current codes. And I worked to identify problems in those amendments so that I could make appropriate decisions to either avoid those or correct those. Also, with early direction from the board, began to look at amendments from nearby communities and work to try and align codes more closely together. Third step was read codes. That's a, that's a big one. And it's during that phase that I find certain things that maybe other jurisdictions and maybe we had not in the past addressed. And so there's a few of those in here, but by and large, it's limited. And then in order to reduce some redundancies and provide a path for building designers and contractors that is somewhat easier to follow. We also looked at how to eliminate some of the other codes and kind of integrate the most important parts into our code. So now I feel like what we have here really meet to the best of the abilities objective. And we're ready to have a good discussion about it.
All right, thanks, Aaron. Anything you wanted to highlight, um, since we last, we had, I think, a really production meeting? And we appreciate all the effort you've put into getting um input through the open house, through our last meeting, through the online submissions, emails, all that. But um, since we last talked, are there any changes to highlight?
So I think there, you know, there were some few pieces that I worked with the consultants to address from the green code and the R E B P to draw into these building codes where we could ignore the rest. So there's some of that in here largely with uh regards to appliances as far as being star, uh, higher efficiency equipments, which were all kind of triggered by those codes already. So to, in order to keep those in place, had to add them in here. And uh, then the paperwork we just handed out while I was doing some review today, there was a couple items that came to my attention. And uh, they're the first, you know, they're both two sections of the code. I show a strikeout and what I changed the language to read. These changes were, the first one was just a technical, the second one was a lot of financial requirements were there. And so I moved those into the fee tables instead of in the code. That's, that was what happened today. So I do apologize that it wasn't in everything earlier.
Okay.
But I think there were sensible changes there.
So was, was there anything else based on the feedback at the last meeting, either from the board or from the public that changed since we last?
Yeah, we took a, you know, there was the provisions that had the uh renewable energy fund. And uh, struck, I pulled all that out and just made sure there was language that those fees that get collected in those categories will go to that renewable energy fund. And we just need to work on the ordinance to redevelop it.
Okay, so you took out the details about the whole rebate?
Yes.
Okay, good, good. Okay. Great.
Clear to um develop a system.
Okay. So I think we should run this kind of like a land use hearing where staff does their presentation, we ask clarifying questions. We hold our like deliberation and I think this, I think that for now, but it was as clarifying questions. Let's hear from the public. It looks like there's a few people who may uh, want to speak. And then let's bring it back for deliberation and hopefully a motion um to, to vote one way or the other. So let's start with clarifying questions about any part of this um that you would like to clarify.
I'm sure that we're gonna be hitting it quickly.
I guess, uh, I'm just curious if you have any, uh, or how often under our current codes or just in the process of doing your job, you feel like you come across sort of like logical inconsistencies in the code? sort of like logical inconsistencies in the code where you're forced by the code to make a decision that you think is illogical for the purposes of practicality or safety or whatever, but it's, you know, outlined in the code.
So the code is really developed to allow that occur when it needs to occur. There are definitely provisions early on in the code that do specifically allow that. What I feel like when I read the twenty twenty-one codes, the earlier additions that I've worked with, they have done a much better job at clarifying a lot of the code. What used to maybe be a gray zone is definitely more clear, which I appreciate in the, in the code enforcement. But again, there's still, I had to authorize some changes yesterday for that. So it happens. And it's built that way.
And we, and it's kind of your prerogative, professional prerogative to some degree to be able to make those decisions.
I mean, obviously my main priorities are going to be safety issues and that are going to be my initial review. And then I move into things like building durability, water management, things like that. And my way down the list.
Yep. You mentioned an effort to, to align our amendments to surrounding municipalities and jurisdictions and I'm, and then, and you sort of had a little caveat that you said you kind of with your knowledge made some, you know, maybe, maybe made some changes where, where you thought it was appropriate. Can you, can you give just a few of the, it doesn't doesn't need to be an exhaustive list, but just a couple of those cases where a builder might, might be notified sort of now, like, hey, this is a little bit different than, more significantly different than if we cross the county line or cross.
Yeah. Well, I think. Oh, wow. That's a good one. Glenwood Springs, when they adopted the twenty-one codes recently, they did not amend out any sprinkler provisions. When I started my review, I contacted them and was like, really? You guys didn't do any changes? Nope. In March, while I was at code classes talking to them, they're like, oh, we're going to revisit our code because we're having problems with the sprinklers. And I asked them then at that time, where, where are you going? Two thousand square feet is where they're at. Salt, five thousand square feet. I stayed with that five thousand, but then I added an additional allowance for town homes to go up to seventy-five. It'd be a complex building area, but that was a decision made that seemed to make more sense. There's just few out there.
Okay. Thanks. Good question.
I just want to clarify that the code says that any home has to be sprinkled. And so he's amending it. He's amending it so that five thousand square feet and up, you don't, or you have to.
Right.
Below that you don't.
Gotcha.
Thank you, Jess.
Other questions from the board? Did you have something, Jess?
Yeah, I have a few.
I'm ready.
Uh, in chapter one, the currently adopted Carbondale code has seven provisions or amendments and we are about to adopt thirty-one. And so I just wanted to know why we are, why are we adding so much to chapter one and not leaving that to administrative?
Sure. So there's some rules here and there's some other ones that are a little harder to explain in quick detail, but.
Just like an overview.
So for example, I have in here the amendments about work without permit and the fees that would be, you know, assessed. In our current code, we adopted that same amendment, but in the I R C and in the I V C, but then failed to include that in the plumbing code, the mechanical code, several other codes. By moving that to chapter one and applying it to all codes, it made it so I didn't have to have all that numerous amendments in each one and simplified that. That when I read the language of the current code, which general statement here, these provisions contained in this article shall apply to all codes as adopted in this chapter. When I read that in my initial start of this, that's when my epiphany was like, hey, this saves me a lot of amendments within each individual code. So a lot of this stuff is bound to somewhere else. I'm just putting it in one place and not having to do more amendments.
Okay. Uh, why did we add the language about warrants to enter properties in section eighteen, one, two, thirty?
So it's a great one. That one. If you go to, where is that? The language there is actually pretty much the same as the code itself. What I, I can't remember exactly what we put in here, but if you give me a second, I'll read it.
And Jess, where are you finding these? Cause I'm looking in the memo and I'm not seeing what you're seeing.
It's in the ordinance.
In the ordinance. Okay.
Um, if you scroll all the way down to, so the first exhibit is chap, article one scope and administration, which is what I'm referring to, all of the thirty-one provisions.
Okay.
In section one, two, thirty, which is on page.
Okay. And then following, thank you. So these are all of our amendments that are piled.
Yes, just for this first chapter.
Yes.
The one.
And where are we at? The right of entry is already included in the code. And it allows the same as what this language here says. So it really wasn't a change in that regard. We had a sorry, just trying to remember where to find it in here. Yeah. So this one's out of the I V C, but there's similar, similar language is going to be found in the residential code and pretty much all the others as well. Uh, but the right of entry, would you rather, I just read you the language of the code in comparison to what's here?
I just would like to know, you're, you're saying that the warrant language is in the original code. So it's not actually an amendment. You're just adding it to article one.
But my, Aaron, I think it's in. It's in eighteen, one, sixty.
Yeah.
Of our current.
That's, and that may be, thank you. Cause that's probably where I did. Grab it.
And it specifically falls out warrants? Cause I searched warrants in our current code.
If entries refused, the building official may forthwith stop issue, issue a stop order until entry is allowed.
There's a.
I guess the language, Jess, about getting the municipal court to issue an order at first blush is different, but it's otherwise very similar.
Okay.
And I think that's really the only manner in which you can proceed there when you don't have the ability to enter, if you're not granted the right to enter, then you have to seek the legal authority to enter.
The language about each day such violation is allowed to persist shall constitute a separate and new offense. That seemed new to me and I just wanted to understand why we added that language.
Which section?
It's in all of the codes when there's a violation.
So.
So it's in violation. I just don't know the actual section number. Section eighteen, one, three, ten. The violation penalties, violation penalties, right?
Believe that is a.
We read that today, Aaron, and I looked that up. That's the same language that we had with Ty.
I didn't see it. It was today.
In our municipal code, it's only the amendment, which is the first paragraph. The next two paragraphs that are here under sentence are all in.
That is where we went with that, huh? Yeah.
Okay. They're in the original code.
Yeah.
Okay. And that's in all codes.
The, it actually expands sometimes in the other codes. For example, I think the plumbing code shows those first four categories that I have referenced and then they continue on.
You don't need to go into it.
The O nine code was the same way. So it's really confusing that they put the language they did in one paragraph. I split it and moved half of the language you see into the first section of violations. And then I moved the last part of it into the violation penalties.
Okay. Okay, great. I think those were my clarifying questions.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Any other questions to the board before we open it up for public comment and questions? And then we'll come back for deliberation. Okay. Anybody in the public who would like to share your questions or comments with us, you can approach the podium and just state your name. Tell us if you live in Carbondale or elsewhere and you have about three minutes.
My name is Fred Malo. Live at Fourteenth and, uh, fourth and Garfield. Uh, anyway, I've expressed my opinions on this before. Our organization, three fifty Roaring Fork is looking for new, no gas outlets in new construction, all electric. E V chargers in new construction. And limited outdoor energy burners like pools and, and snow melt. And we have a new one. And I know at least one of the trustees is in favor of this. Uh, in new construction, there should be a space for compost, compost collection. So that's my three minutes.
Okay. Thanks, Fred. You had two to spare. Anybody else like to address the board?
I'm Jack Wheeler. I live at one, three, one, nine Wald Circle and I have many concerns. I'm not going to go into the specifics of all of them, but I, I do. I'm concerned that some of the language that, that makes it a requirement to have an architect is going to affect people negatively. Um, right now we can hire a design, a CAD driver. And we can develop a set of plans and hire a structural engineer to do the structural engineering. And I can tell you that I've, I've done a renovation on my house. I did the design. I'm a general contractor. I've been in construction all my life. I also spent five years as the capital asset director for the city of Aspen. I think this is gonna, it's gonna create a burden for people and it's gonna force large dollar figures into a, a project could become unaffordable because of it. And I think it's unreasonable. I think there's some great CAD drivers out there and there's some really smart people that, that can vision a home. Now, as far as commercial and multifamily, I tend to agree there should be an architect because it gets into access issues and other things that most people don't know about. But for single family residences, I think it should remain the way it is where, you know, if somebody wants to design their project, they should be able to do that as long as they have the structural engineering and any other engineering required taken care of. I think it's a big deal and I don't see any allowance for that. And I think it's gonna, I'm surprised that we don't have design firms in here talking about this because it's going to change the way a lot of people do business in this valley. Carbondale's is one of the, it's affordable, you know? And I think it's a, it's a mistake to make that a code requirement. The I think of what the other issue was. I think that the, the, some of the language that's in there. First off, the chief building official has a lot of leeway already in the codes. I think that the property management code should not be adopted. I think it's going to create a lot of issues for people that are trying to take care of their homes and doing it the way they can. The fact that we're, we're talking about making people pull permits prior to doing work on emergency situations in, in their home. I don't, I don't think it's right. You know, we've always had the, the opportunity to take care of those things and a plumber comes in, they take care of it. And replacing toilets, things like that. I don't think it should be, I, I think it's going to continue to go the way it goes. And it's going to be an opportunity for a lot of divisiveness and problems between the public, you know, the residents and the people that live in Carbondale and the building department. And I think it's, it's an overreach and I think it's going to impact people financially as well as that whole thing, you know, it's like the property management code. We have ordinances and HOAs and things that take care of a lot of that. And now we're going to bring the building department and comdev into it. I think it's a mistake.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Anybody else like to comment on this before we bring it back to the board for consideration?
Can I respond to some of the comments?
Yeah, definitely. Well, I just want to make sure we, we got them all. Sure. It's brief.
It also concerns me very much that we're going to adopt something and a fee schedule was generated today.
Okay. Yeah. If you'd like to shed some light on any of those.
Yeah, absolutely. Go in order. From Fred's comments, yeah, we haven't banned gas, but we did create some provisions that just disincentivize gas. But that allows them to make their own decision there. Uh, E V chargers are mandated by the electric credit codes that are included here. Uh, we also have a fee assessment for outdoor energy uses to try and discourage those. Don't have anything about compost collections.
Okay.
From Jack's comments. The provisions for professional design requirements, this is a hybrid of the code language and the amendments by the salt and Glenwood Springs. This is where I really tried to blend the three communities more in line with each other. And the code always again allows me to consider alternatives, which we always can do that. It's a, I don't feel like that's a overreach there. Emergency repairs there is definitely nothing saying that you're going to need to get a re-permit before those repairs take place. I have, I had a conversation with a contractor this morning who had a boiler that needed to be replaced. I asked him to send me some photos, at least to give me the equipment that's there and what they're proposing to replace. Cause my only real concern at that time is to not replace something with a less efficient piece of equipment. Soon as I know that, do your emergency repair, get your permits here. We'll get that caught up when I have a minute to do so. And the fee schedule, that fee schedule is the same fee schedule you've seen the whole time. I've never changed the fees, you know, the initial time we talked, there was some green fees that were included in there. We just removed that uh, from the initial conversation, but the fee schedule itself has been out there the entire time. The only things that changed were uh, the most recent changes that I put out today. And there was some penalty, uh, fee schedule for some commercial buildings that maybe don't meet the net zero requirements or other energy production requirements of the code. That's really the only two changes that have happened anytime recently.
Okay. Thanks for addressing those. Um, let's dive in and just start sharing thoughts and try to move toward a motion in some manner.
I just wanted to follow up on Jack's question on the professional requirements. Can you just say where? Um, where would I find that?
So that is, uh, in section eighteen, one, one hundred. And it runs for little ways because it's got the submittal documents, construction documents. With an exception, the building official is authorized to waive the submission of construction documents and other data not required to be prepared by a registered design professional if it is found that the nature of work applied or is such that reviewing of construction documents is not necessary to obtain compliance with that code. And finishes with amended construction documents.
Thanks, I'm just reading it.
Sure. Okay, other questions or thoughts? I mean, I think the main thing now is uh as we, you know, we asked for this, so hopefully we're gonna move toward approval of this um and and get ourselves uh much closer to up to date with our codes and then be on a more regular cadence of updating them every two years or four years or whatever we end up doing. So I think the key questions now are, are there any amendments here that we're making to the international codes that um we think are gonna cause problems? Or where we wanna have any further discussion, otherwise I think we should move toward approval.
Um, so I I think I'm in agreement with with Jack and and maybe some other trustees that the property management codes are are maybe more than we need. Um, my my feeling generally, um, you know, short of major safety issues, um, which I think are often covered elsewhere in our code, um, is that 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 some of the neat and tidy aspects of it are 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 the types of things that someone can find elsewhere in town. Um, if they're, if they wanna be part of a HOA, they can sort of opt into that elsewhere. Um, or in in other situations, um, so that's that's a, that's a concern on my part. The 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 um exclusion for um the ten by twelve shed thing, I think is actually, should not be in here, but should be just part of, should be dealt with in the UDC. Um, and and perhaps there's a way that 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 an unheated uh built accessory building not on a foundation, um, or something like that. Basically, we we write that out of it so that, so that we're not trying to do UDC uh business in here by by basically saying, well, if you have a ten by twelve shed, you're good. But then if you build a chicken coop, we we gotta involve the building inspector. Or if you have a ten by twelve shed, but you wanna do a play uh playhouse for a kid or you want to have a little compost shed to bring uh Fred's um thoughts into it, you know, that you would need a building inspector uh for that. Um, so I think that, I think there is a way to do that, and whether that means we we, you know, Ben, I know you wanna get this this passed, but I think also, um, I I I don't know the 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 structure here by which we kind of a- address some some relatively large topics here um and maybe approve something or approve it with conditions or approve it with some things to change next. Um, but that, um, let's see, I had a couple, a couple other quick ones. Um, I don't know that we necessarily need a Department of Aquatic Inspections. Um, I feel like solar, solar permits could be something that could be a carrot. Um, I feel like if we're trying to move in that direction, uh, maybe certainly for residential folks, that could be something that's free. If we really want people to do that, we shouldn't throw a two hundred dollar hurdle at them right away. Um, and then one sort of like nit nitpicky thing admittedly, but but just like, um, I I happen to see the the testing of ducts was referenced a hundred watt light bulb, and this was, this was our amendment, so this is our language. Um, these days, one, you can't really buy a hundred watt light bulb, light bulbs are, should be measured in lumens. So whatever that is, you should put a sixteen, I forget what, I looked it up. It's basically a sixteen hundred, fifteen hundred lumens bulb in there, um, and that would make, that would be consistent.
Just to answer that one in particular, that part of the code is actually the code, the rest of it is my amendment.
Oh, okay, there we go, okay, okay, fair enough, fair enough, fair enough. Um, I think that covers my concerns. The 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 shed stuff, um, is I think a big deal and and I think we have enough folks already out of compliance, yeah.
May I just ask a question of Ross about the shed? Because I know that's an issue for a number of people in here, but I wanna maybe clarify something, or maybe I misunderstood what you said. The reason it's in the building code is because if we just took it out of the building code, then every one of them would need a permit, because it's a building. This is exempting them from needing a permit.
No, I understand, I think if we just exempted all bill, I mean, exempted any building ten by twelve or smaller that's on a movable, not on a solid foundation and is unheated, then we could deal with.
So leave it in, but not.
Expand it further.
But not limit it to one.
Yeah, 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 yes, correct, correct.
Okay, I just wanna make sure we're talking about the safety.
Absolutely, and that, and that way we have, we're clear on what doesn't need to be inspected and we can let the UDC deal with where where we put things or of small, small little things.
So let's start with, can somebody point us to where this language is about the sheds? And the hundred and the hundred and twenty square foot stuff? And then I'd love for Aaron and I think that Jared's here to just help us.
You'll find that in Article two and Article three?
In IRC section one oh five point two exemption one, which is pretty far down because it's in the IRC, not the IBC. So it is.
Do you have a page dumper?
I'm trying to get. So Article three residential code starts on page thirty four. The exemption is on.
Thirty six?
Yes.
Okay.
No, thirty five, it's the end of thirty five.
Keep in mind that that is the language that's in our current code.
The only difference that I added the not more than one exempt structure, but the handouts from the time I started here and the, it's dated in my computer, twenty twenty. Uh, and Mary had commented that when she started here, the policy always has been only one exempt structure. So I just, I brought it into the code because the handouts only go to certain people too. So having it in more places seemed to make more sense to me.
I understand, I understand why it's there.
As long as I can make my point on why I did it.
So this is not a change from current practice?
Not at all.
But it sounds like there's not support for current practice then? 'Cause current practice is you can have an exemption, you don't need a permit for something less than hundred and twenty square feet, but you only get one of those. And so it sounds like there's board support for removing line E where it says not more than one exempt structure per lot.
I'd just like to say that we could make this a lot simpler and say that accessory structure is less than a hundred and twenty square feet, less than ten feet tall, without permanent foundations should be exempt.
Okay, does this mention the foundations right now?
No, but that would, that would change like the, if I'm gonna buy a greenhouse at Costco and a playhouse at Costco and I'm just gonna set them in my yard.
Okay.
Or I'm gonna get a shed kit and I'm gonna build it.
Yeah.
I'm still building it.
Aaron or Jared, would you have concerns if we removed the the limit on those and maybe added the part about it's a non-permanent foundation?
I think the important part is that nobody's in compliance anyway.
We have a lot of issues here, no doubt about it.
And so, um.
But I also have, I have a current enforcement action where I have a neighbor that is very unhappy about the number of sheds that are on the property and there are all kinds of violations going on. So uh, when we change this, um, there's gonna be some other people not very happy on the other side of this, so. Just, I mean, that's where mine is, and then obviously my bigger concern is we start getting into fire risk. That we get a bunch of sheds on a property, we are increasing the potential for fire propagation.
Okay.
Um, from a zoning perspective, um, a shed, any sort of accessory structure is counted as impervious area. There is no exemption, period. Um, we do have an exemption for the exact same hundred and twenty square foot storage sheds from lot setbacks, so they can be closer to a lot line than the lot setback would otherwise permit. Um, so long as it's not placed on a permanent foundation, but, and not located on easement, but um they're still counted towards um impervious lot coverage. And so what we find often in Carbondale is when someone wants to do a addition, expand their property, um, we ask for uh impervious lot coverage calculation and they realize that their sheds or or their uh patios or whatever that might be are putting them significantly over. Um, and so I think it's really kind of a uh policy question, you know, for the trustees, how much um do you want to allow the community to kind of push that envelope? And then a new property owner comes, purchases, wants to do something and they have to rectify a lot of work that was done by a um previous property owner or themselves. And that's, you know, really a kind of a policy question um for you guys as far as modifying the UDC to change how these accessory structures under a hundred and twenty square feet are calculated towards impervious lot coverage, that would have to be a UDC amendment, a public process and kind of involve that. But um, you know, and and so I do think there maybe is value if, if you don't want that policy of um allowing people to kind of set themselves up to fail, then, you know, having that um building permit requirement after one could be helpful. But if you're, you know, not concerned with someone having to rectify a lot on their site, then getting rid of that, I think, is from a zoning perspective, okay.
I, if you, if we did amend the UDC to not include those structures in impervious lot coverage, that solves the problem, right?
It it could be another way of solving the problem, correct?
Okay, so it sounds to me like in in the interest of like time here, if we got rid of item E on page thirty five of the resolution or ordinance, sorry, that says not more than one exempt structure per lot, like I'd be more comfortable with that than trying to rewrite all those. I think that there's probably some interaction between those, it says it has to meet all these. Is, do we have general support for that?
I'm just nervous about the permanent, like the, that we're not talking about foundations, like, 'cause then you're then you're talking about the arbors and the pergolas and the similar structures and are we good with that?
I I'm gonna agree with Jess, I think if we need to take the time to 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 write it and add that thing, we can do it.
I don't know that I'm, I just am pointing it out, that it doesn't just talk about storage tool, storage and similar uses and sheds. It's talking about arbors, pergolas, similar structures.
And what's the problem with that?
In many cases.
Okay, well, whenever we make a motion, whenever somebody makes a motion, you can write this however you want. I would recommend that you just strike E if that's the main thing right now, but if somebody wants to make a motion that says something different.
Pointing out the issues.
Yeah.
Striking E.
Um. Yeah, so if you have language ready that you wanna insert there, that's, that's fine. Um, the other, any more discussion about sheds? Um, our other one was the property maintenance code. Um, Aaron, we've had lots of discussion about this. Can you tell us one last time why you have recommended that we adopt a property maintenance code for the first time?
Well, as I had written earlier, I I feel like as communities get larger, we, as a building department, feel a lot of different complaints that used to not occur when we were a much smaller community. Um, and this just gives some, it's a really basic code. It's the, I think there's sixteen pages technically of code requirements in here, and then I amended a few of them out. And uh, it's very limited and it's quite sensible. I'm not married to the code though, this is your code, so if we are not adopting, I'm, I have no real skin in that game. I feel like it's a useful tool, but uh, if I don't have it, I will find a different tool.
And what concerns do board members have about taking staff recommendation on adopting that?
Um, I did read it and I was grateful it was only sixteen pages or whatever. Um, I would feel more comfortable if we didn't adopt it now and we just talked through in more detail 'cause I did, I had not read it, I was only reading your amendments and I hadn't quite clicked how much I wasn't reading. I was only, I was like, oh, screens, whatever. Um, and so I would rather have a conversation, 'cause it does have these ratios of like people per square foot of a room and a living room and a bedroom. And I'm super hesitant to have anything in our code that has that or at least would wanna talk it through in more detail. And so I would feel more comfortable if we um don't adopt that tonight and we revisit it at another time. And that way, and we can hear more about what uh concerns you're seeing or what complaints you're getting that would be addressed here that aren't addressed elsewhere.
Sure.
Um, and so that's where uh I would feel more comfortable.
Any other thoughts on property maintenance code? Do it later. Okay. Anybody have concerns about that, that a motion could be to exclude the property maintenance code? You know, wherever it's referenced here for adoption. Okay. Uh, what else did we have? Those would seem to be the two big ones.
Um, I just have a small one uh that I heard from a member of the public and it makes sense to me. Section R three oh three point one zero point one, which is in the same section, it's in the IRC. Hold on, I'll get you a page number.
It was three oh three. I'm sorry, Jess, what was it, three oh three?
Three point one oh, it's the end of page thirty eight, required heating and the amendment about heated garages.
Yep.
Um. If a home already has gas-fired boilers with heat loops in the floor and a heat loop is added to heat the garage, that seems like a better option than not allowing it and requiring someone to use an electric heater that is less efficient and costs more to run. Using existing gas equipment should be allowed. So if someone has a home or they're building a home and they already have the gas boilers, because we're still allowing that, and they wanna just add a loop to the slab in the garage, that's a much more efficient way to heat the garage than it, than putting, what we're saying right here is that we're requiring, we're not allow allowing fossil fuels as the energy source to heat a garage, but we're still allowing heated garages. So we would be putting an additional system in the garage, so a, an electric heater of some sort, baseboard or hanging from the ceiling, um, which is not efficient, very expensive to run and uh doesn't, it it doesn't work very well and it's a fire hazard in many cases. So if you're already, if you already have the existing gas equipment and you wanna add a loop to heat the garage, you should be allowed to do that, I think.
I had a lot of debate with myself on that one. For the same, for the, with the same intent, really. Um, I think the biggest part for me was trying to manage how the REVP currently has, the way it's always been written out, which was not my favorite way, it says garage, heated garages were prohibited. And then it would go into, oh, but then if you do this, uh. So when I started into the amendments, I was like, okay, how can I try and work with the energy consultants that are obviously, they was like to move forward on electric houses? And and so this was, I dropped the radiant heat portion, but it was always on my mind. And I think if that was a real issue that we wanna resolve, it's easy enough to add that provision in there.
Simple solution be to just remove that amendment to the code?
I don't think you wanna do that.
No, I don't, I don't think that that solves the problem.
But it's easy enough to say for radiant heat only, you know, it would, 'cause that would be the only source.
Existing system.
Mm-hmm.
It has to be on an existing system.
It wouldn't be a new boiler, it would have to be part of the same heating, yeah. That's easy to put in there, it was pretty much there.
Okay, anybody have issues with that suggestion?
I think it's logical.
I guess just yeah, trying to avoid the back door of like people just creating a lot of, you know, poorly insulated, highly heated space.
Well, that's actually, one of the amendments farther in on the energy code is that I did put a requirement that all garage slabs be insulated because I know that that happens a lot, where we don't get involved and the heating systems get added. So my feeling there was to at least mitigate to the greatest extent possible the energy effects that would have, so.
So what section was that again?
R three oh three dot one zero dot one. Um, and then I just wanna express um some of the same stuff about the architect being involved. Um, I think that if we are, yes, it says that the building official can approve plans without an architect's stamp, but um that's very subjective and can be, I mean, that that's a human. Like, if we just leave the code the way it is, where we don't need an architect's stamp, like I can say, I built my home in Carbondale and I did not have an architect, I had a structural engineer stamp my plans and it was fine. And my home is one of the most efficient homes in the neighborhood. I have a record on the blower door tests, like you still have to, you still have to build a very good home. a record on the blower door tests, like, you still have to, you still have to build a very good home. And you still have to have a structurally sound home. And I think just because Glenwood and Basalt are doing it, doesn't mean we have to do it. I think that if we are trying to help people do this stuff in Carbondale so that they can either build additions or build homes in Carbondale for normal people. Architect fees are usually ten percent of a construction budget, and so it's a significant cost to have an architect involved, so I think that in the residential, like, I think if it's just residential, and I would like to not have that requirement. Things are fine.
State mandated for commercial building anyway, so.
I would, I would be fine and with with the limiting that requirement for single-family homes, but I think when we're doing multi-family housing, it it were yeah, it would just make more sense to still still involve an architect, but if we if we carve out, do a carve out for single family.
Yeah, so I could just make an exception that way.
Or additions.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can add an exception for that.
Ah, I think those were the ones I have.
Anybody else have anything that um if we're moving toward approval that should be added to a list of changes from what we see in front of us?
Can I, can I just clarify on the shed front, just to clarify? One, I I I don't have any problem with with sheds being counted towards impervial impervious uh square footage, um I think that that leads, or that talk, that's sort of a measure of density writ large, um and if someone has to remove a shed because they're doing an addition, that's that seems perfectly reasonable in in terms of kind of keeping tabs on our neighborhoods. I do share, I I do agree with Jess's analysis regard, or her thoughts regarding simply removing um I'm I'm a little confused, that that element out of there, which would then still permit items with foundations, because I think that is sort of the difference. Um, I I would, I think perg, if pergolas are part of the the foundation, pergolas or um, I forget what else was called out there, but as part of sort of an attached to the house, that 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 ought to be part of the building inspector's realm, however, I don't think a chicken coop uh unattached, because you already have a a shed, should then be under the auspices or should should need to be required, should need to be building approved. Yes. So I don't know, I don't know exactly how how we would change that or word that, maybe it's the person who spent all his time.
Less than ten feet tall without permanent foundations can can cover what we're looking for, and we'll be at you, Jared.
Generally, I think so, because then you're saying other items with permanent foundations do require permanence.
Makes sense.
That's what I was told, don't make it permanent.
Yeah, if we just, if we include that, then good.
Okay, so that could be read into a motion. Those three items being the criteria, instead of the five that are there now. I mean, I would think you'd want to keep the structure does not house flammable liquids in quantities exceeding ten gallons. I just want to be careful about wiping this away. I like, and do you want to keep the part that says the structure is located at least three feet from adjoining property line and not less than five feet from dwellings?
That's building code.
Right, like that, it seems like there's some stuff here.
First sentence could be that per accessory structures where it talks about pergolas and stuff, the first part of the exemption should just say accessory structure is less than one hundred and twenty square feet, less than ten feet tall without permanent foundations, and blah, 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 and not exempt, not limited to one.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Okay. Erica, are you working on a motion?
I am.
Okay. Well, it's good, somebody's got to get it all.
No, where I lost it.
Notes, but I didn't get that language.
Oh, yes.
I think I got most of it.
Section one oh five.
Yeah, so you could say one-story detached accessory structures, less than one hundred and twenty square feet, less than ten feet tall.
Not on a permanent foundation.
All of the following. ABCD. Or I guess those.
So, yeah, we'd be keeping, uh, sorry.
Keeping all the sub.
Yeah, just eliminating E and the other subsections there, we're keeping them, yeah. Yeah, you got it. I got it, we just wait for the motion. Would that open us up to somebody uses it for their studio or an extra bedroom or something like that?
I think we should add something about non-habitable.
Take away the, because I'm thinking that that's probably the logic behind the list of uses now.
Could heat, could heat cover that?
Keep coming back to just strike E and maybe add something about and not on a permanent foundation.
Yeah, that's.
Just leave it all there.
Could even change E.
Yeah, just change E to say not on a permanent foundation.
Yeah, that's what I started with.
That seems like the simplest edit.
So keep in the language about arbors, pergolas and similar structures.
Yeah, if they can figure out how to build one without a permanent foundation, let them on it. That that leaves the intent.
Actually, that's actually, I can imagine some some situations. Yeah.
But just change E then.
Costco.
I'll turn that, I'll take.
Okay, um, Erica, you got that then, just change E to say not on a permanent foundation instead of not more than one exempt structure. That's a clean edit. Okay, anything else? Okay. Thank you. Erica, it seems like it's your moment to shine. It's taken the same notes. And we've got a an ordinance and a resolution. And I think.
These are all in the ordinance that we just talked about.
Before we make the full motion, I, as far as those other recommendations I had it out this evening, I think we should be taking those into consideration if we want to make that change.
Oh, right, so and and these are in the resolution, no?
Yes, those are just some changes to the current language.
No, are they in the resolution? No, these changes are not.
The fee table is in the resolution and that that is included back there.
Include these in your motion, okay.
And the changes to the fee table.
Okay.
Right, I suppose I'll do that on another one, yeah, yeah. Keep me straight.
See how this goes. Um, what's our ordinance called? I would, let me just open that up again. I would move to approve ordinance number three. Series of twenty twenty five, an ordinance of the Board of Trustees, the Town of Carbondale, amending chapter eighteen of the municipal code regarding building regulations with the following changes in uh first in article one, uh the edits provided by staff.
Thank you.
Removing article eight, which is exhibit J in our packet, the property maintenance code. Changing, ooh, I lost it, section one oh five point two regarding accessory structures. R one oh five point two, thank you. Changing uh language in the accessory structure section to change item E to say not on a permanent foundation. And section R three oh three point one oh point one. I don't have the specific language, but to include language allowing for radiant heat in a garage if a boiler is being specked. If it's on existing gas. And then add an exception, and I didn't get what this is, to not require an architect stamp in single-family projects and renovation projects.
Can I ask you to add a couple of things, because in this motion it says the twenty twenty one international building codes and amendments as presented with such codes being effective for all building permit applications submitted after June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. I think that's an important piece of it.
Please include that in my motion.
I had that in the ordinance, I don't mean to interrupt, but.
Yeah, yeah.
I had that in the ordinance, Lauren, and I took it out um after talking with Aaron. And the reason was, you could have somebody file June thirtieth, a completely, like a fifty percent complete application, there could be a lot of debates about, is it complete, is it, you know, are people racing to beat the new codes? Is it really there? I don't know what the answer is, but that's why I didn't say that, I just said the code would be effective, which I thought meant that the the building department would then have discretion to determine what's complete and what's not. As opposed to somebody just filing, I don't know, thoughts, board?
It's a dicey thing either side of this, for sure.
Or at least add the word complete, perhaps?
Oh, that's, then you have to add in time for review to deem it complete.
True.
So I would just stick with submitted by.
It's not, it wasn't in there before.
And if people are, have their stuff together enough at this point, it's not like a super long timeline, if people have, are close enough to submit for permit. They should submit, I mean, like, it's in their best interest to submit before this goes through. I I, I think it should be submit.
And paid fees as well?
Well, you can't determine the fees until you review the application, right?
We usually take a calculation for planner review fee and then it, we verify that during review process. I'm not trying to drive the answer, just explain that it was in a draft and I I'm the one who took it out.
You know, every time a building department starts to move to new codes, we do get inundated with a lot of permit applications and it's definitely tricky where some people are just going to try and be like, oh, I submitted by that date, and they may not be anywhere close. I don't know if we have any way to include some language that allows us some discretion for applications that are deemed very much not complete, but uh there there's some tricky things there.
Do you have a proposal?
Not necessarily, because I know that this is just, it's an issue every time these things happen.
Only my motion says submitted by June thirtieth, okay.
Before June thirtieth, by June thirtieth?
By.
So you want the ordinance to be edited to include that language? Where it says, where it says the code is effective July first. So it would also say permit submitted before July first to be processed under the existing code.
I think so, I think we should make that clear.
Submitted. Regardless of whether complete or fees paid.
Wouldn't, wouldn't we want to at least say, I mean, have so some stipulation that we can at least look at in terms like, say, say, complete, completed or sufficiently complete, or something that we can.
It takes time to review an application to deem it complete. And so I think that that's a little arbitrary, and they could say, well, you took so long to deem my application complete, that you waited until July first.
Yeah.
Well, I think we we obviously stamp everything as it comes in, so we know when we're receiving this, not when viewing it, so.
It should be submitted.
I think we're going to see some real tough times on that, but we'll deal with it.
Not to be too picky, but should it say submitted or should it say received by?
I guess, or what's the situation if I remove that from my motion? With how it's written, then how are things?
It just has, the code is, per our discussion last time.
Yeah.
Well, I put in a delayed effective date, so basically, well, if you pass an ordinance tonight, it'll be published in the next forty days. The ordinance will be official about forty-two days from now, but the code will still be delayed until July one. But it does not say what, you know, submitted or complete or fees or anything, but there's lots of law in Colorado about that, if you have a complete application under a prior code, then you're entitled to be processed under that code, but it's a complete application, if it's just submitted, that differs from what general law is, you guys have the right to do that, you can go ahead and make that in there, but I'm just letting you know, I I, this wasn't even something Aaron directed, Aaron asked me to write an ordinance and I wrote it and I had a clause sort of like this, and I was like, huh, I think that I'd rather have general Colorado law apply than create something unique that is harder to interpret. But um you've, you know, it's your prerogative, this is your code.
I was just reading from what was actually in the packet.
Yeah.
So as far as the motion that was in the packet.
So submitted permit language is in the motion. I missed that, if it was, I apologize.
But, you know, if it becomes less slippery slope to just use Colorado law.
Yeah, I'll remove it from my motion.
Let's just go with the way that's written. July first.
No.
It says July first in the packet, Lauren brought up a change, we considered the change.
Oh, in the packet, okay, as it's written in the ordinance.
Yes.
As it's written in the ordinance is July first. Effective, okay. Okay, so we have a motion.
I have a motion.
On the table, do we have a second?
Do you have it, Patrick?
Yeah, that's how I would enforce it. Motion by Erica, second by Ross. Discussion of the motion, clarifications, Patrick, any clarif- clarifying questions on what the motion is?
If I can re- read, I guess, what the amendments are. Um, article one edit provided, uh, provide by staff, removing article eight. The property maintenance code, um, section R one oh five point two, changing uh the um accessory language, um including language for radiant heat in garage and exceptions to not require an architect for a single home and renovations, is that accurate?
Yeah, that's my list.
Yep.
Okay, any further discussion before we call a question? Yeah.
Can I just say one thing? What if we move the date out month?
I'm inclined to stick with the staff recommendation on this, but.
If I might, I did, as you guys were having that debate, I I was thinking, well, what if the code was, just don't, don't take the, you guys get to decide, but September first with the the you have to get your building permit application by July first, there was two months to process it, you know, we could get into all kinds of permutations and combinations, but that July first date, to answer your simple question, can be any date you guys choose that is more than forty-two days from tonight.
I was just thinking that would allow for the review to be deemed complete if someone's ready or someone's close to ready and had been, so here's, I just want to explain how this works. If someone has been designing a home for six months to the current code and then we change this and they're not quite ready to turn it in, they have to redesign the whole house. Which costs a lot of money. So giving them September first or August first gives them a little bit more time to get their packet together and deem it complete, because they've designed this whole house, they've spent hundreds sometimes tens of thousands, hundreds, hundreds of thousands of dollars to build a house to design a house to the code that they knew was here. So it could cause serious financial ramifications if if we don't make that appropriate.
But you're just moving the goalposts poten- potentially without without it being like a, not having a submission date and then a complete date.
That's how I would feel.
So submit by July first, but deemed complete by.
Yeah, I would, I would say keep the submission date the same and, yeah, add add a like a grace period of like, of consideration, because I just think if you move it out to August, it's just like, oh, we got more runway to try to get something to seventy-five percent done and call it good enough.
I just want to really caution, make sure that the ones we get by July first are made priority to review, to deem them complete, that we're not pushing them off just to get them onto the next code. That's my fear.
We do receive a lot of stuff that's already meeting the twenty-one code, so what they're dealing with would be a few of the, you know, some of the amendments too, there a lot of people are not signing at the own nine code.
I understand, I understand, I just want to make sure that if we have a submission date and a completion date that we prioritize the people that are submitting by that date, so that they have the chance to get the completion by that other date.
I mean, we've been talking about tail codes for three years now also, and I just feel like they've had pretty good warning that we're working on this, so get your act together.
It's just a lot of money.
Do you want to amend your motion or you want to let your motion stand? You have a motion.
I'm gonna let it stand.
Okay, so we have a motion by Erica, second, who seconded it, Ross?
Yes.
Hosted. Okay. Patrick, can you call the roll call, please?
Pass it.
Aye.
Cribs?
Aye.
Laird?
Aye.
Monta Mayor?
Aye.
Roberson?
Aye.
Sparhawk?
Aye.
Mayor?
Yes.
Passes.
We did it. That was a lot of work. For all your work on that and trustees for all the feedback and input and staff and everybody in the public who's contributed a lot to that. And hopefully next time it won't be quite as painful because. I know, I know. I'm not leaving. Don't worry. Just rearranging.
I actually need to be excused. I'm leaving super early in the morning. And Clear, you guys do awesome work. And Jared's motioning at me something. But I promised my kid I would get home and because I won't see her in the morning.
All right. Thanks, Erica. Thanks for making that motion.
That's what I was here for.
Okay, clear work plan.
So were we going to vote on the resolution?
Oh, I thought you had that in your motion. I thought it was both.
Nope.
All right.
Uh, motion to I moved to adopt resolution four series two thousand and twenty five, updating the building department fee schedule set forth in appendix A of the Carbondale Municipal Code effective July first, two thousand and twenty five.
Second.
Motion by Jess, second by Colin. Any questions or discussion?
That are the minor amendments.
Oh, sorry.
That are on this.
No, these are the separate. These are for the resolution. I moved. Can I redo my motion? Okay, I'm just amending my emotion, my motion to include the amendments provided by staff tonight.
Colin still seconds that. So we have a motion by Jess, Colin by second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, great.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Second, Erica. Leave those. Leave those. We'll put them away.
Okay, let's talk about the clear work plan. Lauren Zuleika, thanks for being here with us late. We probably don't want to dive too terribly deep into this right now, but let's hit the highlights and talk about the work plan. I mean, I think in particular, things where you'd like some feedback.
Hi, I'm Zuleika Pevick. I'm the Built Environment Team Lead at Clear.
Lauren Serbia, Strategic Development Director at Clear. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you all. Really happy to be on this. That's great. Congratulations.
All right, thanks.
Yes. All right, so we in the packet, we did provide a two thousand and twenty four scope work in progress recap. Zuleika can provide, I think, just a few highlights and we're happy to provide follow up information, answer any questions that this was part of what was requested to just kind of get up to speed on some of the accomplishments from last year to inform work this year. And I think we can also blow through the work plan pretty quickly. And we do have some questions for for you all to get feedback on.
And as part of the energy or all of the code updates, Clear hosted and organized some trainings, co-trainings last year that were really well attended, over a hundred attendees. We did, we finished up the Home Energy Score Pilot Project by sending out all of the reports. And we are continuing, I guess we didn't finish it up in two thousand and twenty four. We're finishing it up now, doing follow up with all of those. And we, you know, bid outreach to hundreds of Carbondale residents through that process. We've helped the town, we supported the town in applying for a grant from the Colorado Energy Office to do some of the electrification work that we worked on last year as well. And we did some some outreach at the Crystal River, no, Crystal Valley Mobile Home Park, the one that's actually in town boundaries last fall to try to encourage people to get signed up for weatherization programs. And that's something that we're we're expanding through G C E into other towns this year.
I would say some of the things that y'all heard about actually from your own staff. So from Eric talking about the pool, we did start some outreach and education and working with staff on the importance of direct pay opportunities for local government. So submitting a first tax return at some point when these projects are ready and early totals, I mean, we are talking probably five hundred thousand dollars potentially. It could really stack up. Yep, which is fantastic and it's new territory. So it just requires coaching and figuring out the latest guidance from the state as well. A couple other things, like I think of note would be looking at facilities usage data and some rate issues that is part of the A E M program. And then with the extra attention that we really kind of started to pay to Carbondale at the end of the year, Heidi was able to total up some savings estimates. These, I would say, are, yes, results of energy savings, but also just in paying attention to billing and how important that is. So looking at the rec center creeping up on thirty percent savings there just from tweaking bills and managing them correctly. So that's just, I just wanted to kind of make note of that.
That's amazing.
And we just look forward, I think, to kind of digging deeper with the town and making sure we create, I think, a system that is less reliant on us, easier for staff. I mean, it's going well, but that is just integrated as the ongoing coaching that we provide and just working with the team here to keep that rolling year after year. Let's see. I, you know, I would say we've obviously talked about geothermal mobility. We held some great events, spring E V ride and drive and wrapped up the I'm sorry, oh, and bike there. So happy to provide more information, but do you all have any earning questions about two thousand and twenty four at this point? Or any information we can provide?
Any questions from the board?
Lauren, could you talk a little bit more about the car share project opportunity?
Yes, that was something that we started scoping, apologize. At the end of two thousand and twenty four and are looking to submit a grant for that to offer an E V or plug in hybrid car share service through a third party vendor. And this would be through a camp grant with the state. And it would be multi, sorry. Multi county, potentially Mesa County and Garfield County.
This isn't in our menu memo, is it? Is it in our memo or?
Yeah, I.
Uh, it's on page three.
Are we down in the work plan or?
Huh?
Page three?
Page three of the work plan for two thousand and twenty five?
Of the work plan. I was like, we started talking about that in two thousand and twenty four, but we didn't go much.
I think where we were was just highlights from the past.
Oh, okay.
That's okay. And then we'll hear about the next year. Were there any questions about what what we accomplished in the last year?
Okay.
The work plan.
Let's do it. So Zuleika can cover, this is very detail oriented, so we're going to skip over most of this. I would say the takeaway for tonight is we informed a lot of the work plan for this year based on the Path to Net Zero documents that have been developed for existing buildings and new construction. And as you all discussed in the the beginnings of the Path to Net Zero conversation before, code adoption was kind of where we're starting to see a difference in trajectory, a difference between carrots and sticks and what was some things that were codified tonight and some things that are not. And so I would propose to you all that we be able to either work with staff or come back at a different time and discuss the path to net zero and how it really affects Clear's work plan. And there's a few items in there that are exciting and ambitious and have been called out in the Path to Net Zero that I think would deserve a separate conversation.
Okay.
Yep. So that would be one thing. Zuleika, is there anything you'd like to add about?
Not specifically, more just that I think there could be things like making home energy assessments mandatory at certain trigger points. That's in the Path to Net Zero. Is that the direction we're going? Should we be working on, you know, an ordinance to get there? All of that stuff, it feels like we're we're not quite at at that point where we can just make that decision and move forward. So it feels like we need a little bit more just guidance from the Board of Trustees to move forward with some of those things that are in the Path to Net Zero and in our scope of work. Just feeling like some extras, some extra conversations will probably be good.
And that would be not to necessarily change where we're headed ultimately with those things, but probably looking at the timeline and where, when, when do we want to get to those places? So that would include building energy assessment requirements, looking at reducing a square footage requirement for benchmarking. So we are right now currently doing a fair amount of work to just inform the public about the state's new benchmarking requirements. And it's been in conversation, you know, tho- those are pretty large thresholds. Carbonale doesn't have many fifty thousand square feet. So what are we, what what is a useful compromise? Let's see. Going through, I think we've already identified, we'll work with the town to help dial in some appropriate rebate levels based on current market conditions and what we think would be the best bang for the buck as far as like tweaking the triggers to get people to take actions that we want and getting really comprehensive about those measures, I think, and flexible. Let's see. We will be updating the town's greenhouse gas inventory starting in July when that data is available, which I think is really important to take stock of where we are, where we were. The last one we had was two thousand and seventeen. And then I think everything else is fairly self explanatory, but we've got a lot of really specific projects that year, this year, we're really excited about. And it feels really great to have that direction from you all. You know, nothing seems too vague at this point. We're just cranking it out. Yep.
That all sounds good to me. I mean, I think the idea of a deeper conversation about the Path to Net Zero, we've had some of that and, you know, recognize the regional Path to Net Zero. And I think Chris and some others were supportive of, do we just shift over to that regional Path to Net Zero instead of our really specific one? Yeah, we've run into some challenges, I think, with ours that was set a few years ago and keeping up with it and what kind of guidance that should or should not be given, things like code updates. So that sounds like a good follow up. What other questions or feedback? I mean, is there anything in here that jumps out at anybody on the board is like, yeah, really, let's really make sure we do that really well, any of these? Or let's reconsider that when you look at the the two thousand and twenty five work plan on the last three or four pages of the memo there?
Well, we we did approve some rebates as part of, I mean, we took it out, but it's still there. So I'm assuming Clear is going to be able to work with Aaron about how do we incentivize folks? And how do we help people make the choices that are before them around electrification, electrification and efficiency and stuff like that? So I think it'd be great to get that going in two thousand and twenty five as opposed to waiting.
We definitely have that planned for two thousand and twenty five. It's just we wanted to get the building code adopted.
Understood, totally understood. Just emphasis, point of emphasis. And I'm also really excited about the E V car share idea. You know, we've talked a lot of times about the possibility of people not having as many cars in town if we have more options for them. And one of the big issues is like, how do you get to junction? And could you take a car share and go there for the day and get back? So I think there's, it has a neat opportunity to fill out our transportation options in the community and the region.
Agreed. You know, I think along those lines, just want to add that we really try to keep Carbonale's interests in mind when any funding opportunities come become available. So if we have money and budget in the scope, which we do, we will provide a certain level of grant writing services, research. So if it comes to helping to support all of the charging changes around here, looking at making sure that we're a resource. So for example, not only are we going to help do one grant, we've found another, an additional grant to go after. And we have the resources in this contract to help staff complete those more quickly. So that's kind of always in our minds as well, just to support staff in that way.
Right. Yeah, I think it's always just worth reminding ourselves that this is our approach to getting our sustainability goals accomplished is contracting through Clear and having this whole team of experts that can kind of plug into whatever we're doing rather than having a sustainability coordinator, you know, who might have limited expertise. And so I think it's a great partnership. And, you know, we direct the scope of work and the E board works on the details. And so and we can always adjust it as we go, but this looks like the right work to me.
Great, fantastic. So we'll work with Lauren or U T L manager to find the right time to come back and talk about Path to Net Zero. Was this best to settle?
Sounds good.
Great. Thank you all so much.
Sorry for the late night.
No, thank you.
And Jared gets the latest. Sorry. Apologies.
I blame Patrick on this one. Very powerful job. My computer crash, I'm going to try to do this from my phone, so apologies.
Okay.
So what I included in the packet was kind of a summary memo of this P U D application that was received by Garfield County. I tried to break down the lengthy application into some bite sized pieces for you all. And I also included a draft referral comment. So the town has an I G A with Garfield County, as does every municipality, saying large developments are required to be referred to the two closest municipalities prior to being deemed complete. Carbondale is one of those for this project. Normally, these kind of referral applications are reviewed by staff and comments are provided to whatever referral agency. But given the scope, scale of this development, we felt it was warranted to bring to the Board of Trustees for kind of a checkpoint to make sure that our comment list is comprehensive, on track with kind of the the thought process of the trustees. And so, you know, I don't want to get into to details of of the application. It's kind of really included in the the summary letter as well as kind of the the referral letter, but really just kind of open it up and ask if you have questions or if there's anything that you feel we missed or misrepresented in the referral letter. And so I'm really happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thanks, Jared. And I'll just add that Jared and Lauren asked me like, how should we approach this? And and we agreed as a group that this one seemed like it was worth bringing to this board's attention because what we didn't want was for something to be in the paper that said, well, the town of Carbondale provided these comments and supported or didn't support this, and this board had no idea. What I want to be really careful about, though, not just because it's nine thirty at night, but just as a matter of process, is that we don't start to feel like we're the approving body. Like, we aren't. And it's not even in our two mile or three mile area. And so our comments are not going to be the make or break thing on this. This is going to be one in a huge stack of comments. And so I think what I don't want to do right now is dive into a big thing about philosophically how we all feel about this potential very large development. As I read this and as I look at it, it seems like it would look and feel something like another Willets with a lot less commercial. But that kind of some density, as well as some single family areas in between two. Some density as well as some single-family areas in between two towns, kind of the way that, that Willets exist between two towns. And so I, I felt like when I read this letter, it was spot-on as far as it's. I think Jared did a really nice job representing our guiding documents, not our individual opinions at this moment in time. And, and representing, you know, the fact that, yeah, we think that there needs to be more workforce housing and like, I think that that's a really important point to make, but then also we might have concerns about some of these other things and we would encourage them to. Sort of go above and beyond in their um affordable and workforce housing restrictions and their sustainability guidelines and things like that, so. I hope we can keep this to a pretty brief, like, is there anything else to add rather than a. Debate on, do we think that this project overall is a good idea, because I don't think that's the question.
I think that's exactly the question. Um, I mean, I, I, I could start, I mean, I've got a whole page of things, but um. I guess my first question about it is sort of a legal question about whether they have actually. Um, followed the law, the water law and, and exercised their water rights appropriately, they've. They raped that property thirty years ago and then they left it to be a bomb of. Just a seed of noxious weed generator basically for thirty, thirty years and uh. Stripped all the topsoil off of it, has, have done nothing with the water, as far as I understand it, I don't think they've rented it out to anybody, I think there's a legal. Question there as to whether they have the rights to, whether they shouldn't pay some level of. Or at least have a reduced level of development potential based on the fact that they have. Not used their water right for thirty years and in the meantime, there's been growth and things that have happened on Missouri Heights and unknown. Um, impacts to other users on that ditch system. If they come back in and say, now we've got Willets allowed, Willets amount of water demand on this whole ditch system, so, I mean, that's my first question. The second, second point I would say is the traffic thing is. I think a signalized intersection is, yeah, that's exactly, we're going to get another Willets and I think. There needs to be, they need to think much more comprehensively about what's happening on. Along that corridor in terms of traffic and. Um, it seems to me like it's gone to the point where they need to figure out. A grade separated crossing, they're not a signalized interception. If the, the plans they propose here have, we would have a stoplight at the Cattle Creek thing, we would have another stoplight. Somewhere between there and Cattle Creek, then we have another right-in, right-out thing. We have all of these additional entrances and exits onto the highway and all these situations where people doing local traffic. Are going to be using Highway eighty-two as their street and they're going to gum up the entire. System even more aggressively. And then I guess the, the final thing, I mean, I think there's a wildlife question there as well about. That's like a place where twelve elk were killed and then they're, you know. What, I mean, I guess they're proposing to remove all of the open space the elk use, maybe that's not an issue. And then I guess the affordable housing question, you know, they're. Under the guidelines of Garfield County, which is a way less um restrictive. Um, just baseline than Carbondale and so you can have a much. Higher expectation that you're going to have second homeowner construction, that kind of stuff, which is competing for construction resources. Um, with stuff in our town and um, so I, I am not convinced that there's, I think there's a, a route there for them to build. Affordable housing and dense, and it actually have some density at the north end of the parcel, but the pro- proposed project is just a total suburban. Um, Willets essentially, and I, for us, for me, I think it's, you know. The whole reason we did all of this comprehensive plan stuff. In town and increased density in town was to avoid this kind of thing, so if we just roll over and, and put these very narrow. Um, sort of technical questions in, I feel like that's an implicit endorsement of this project, which I think needs to go back to the drawing board. Basically, and start over. So, those are my comments.
Others? I mean, I'd focus if we can on the things in the letter, um, in the draft letter, because Jared, is this due tomorrow?
It is.
Yeah. So again, the Garfield County is going to have a big, long, drawn-out process around that and there will be opportunities to participate that and there will be a ton of public. Concern and, and awareness and all that, and so, you know. We're providing staff a little bit of feedback here on is there, is there a big miss? Or does anything seem out of alignment with our existing plans as far as the comments in this document? I think the things about water rights, traffic, like that's all the stuff that they're going to deal with at the county level as the approving body.
I guess just, I think that a lot of these suggestions are very technical and already is limiting the discussion to a signalized intersection on Cattle Creek, you've already set your. Boundaries, what your expectation is here, when I would say the traffic situation requires a whole other level of like. Comprehensive thought about. What is, you know, how does it get, how does it get financed between this project and potentially whatever is happening at Spring Valley Ranch up on the top, who's going to pay for some sort of. Yeah, grade separated thing, which I think is sort of the only true way you're going to solve, have any. To have the traffic work at all in this area. And I think the traffic stuff is totally the, in the interest of our residents to be able to get to Glenwood. Or to be able to have people get to Carbondale and work in our town. And not have, I mean, Willis is the worst traffic in the whole valley, that, that section is just, and it's because of all of this local traffic that's been dumped onto the state highway. And there's, they didn't build the requisite frontage roads and they didn't require the developer to do the requisite. Work to make sure the traffic wasn't a nightmare and that's, so now it's up to the, the county. That's in the eagle to like pick up the pieces and, and they're not doing it, so. I, I just think, yeah, I mean, I don't know, I guess I'm just, yeah, very concerned about this.
Other thoughts? Christina, any thoughts?
No, really, I mean, I think um, what he put on the memo, my biggest thing is transportation and water and it's on here.
Okay, Jess, any thoughts? Great, Ross?
I'm, I guess I, I look at it as, if, would we look at this app, this, this type of a project if it happened to be in our boundaries and would we be excited about it? Um, or would we, would we have more thoughts about it? Because I think if we don't express those, we do end up sort of providing implicit endorsement and I'm not sure I'm ready to do that without. Spending a little more time with it, I mean, and we didn't have much time to look at this, that's, that is a concern, I. I know I was, was um looking a lot at the building code and, and other items and so. You know, uh, who, whose deadline, was, was this a Garfield County deadline?
Yeah, so um, Garfield County needs comments back from the two communities prior to them deeming the application complete. They will still have to refer out the application to those property owners that meet the, the county's referral requirements, I don't believe. The town will be a part of that, but we might get referred. A subsequent time, the application for comments, um, given the sky, the, the scale and scope of the development, but R I G just requires. Them to provide us an opportunity to comment before it's complete.
I, I guess if I was going to try to simplify my commentary, I would try to add something to the sustainability, environmental considerations, it says. I think some level of analysis of their water rights and whether they are legally. Within the law, would they, if they've been following the water law appropriately and then I think within the traffic. Thing, I guess I would say fully signalized or uh better access or something, I guess I would. Um, fully signalized or grade separated access near Cattle Creek Road.
Colin, any thoughts?
Well, I was kind of wondering if we could, I mean, I think, I think Jared did a nice job with all his, his, his general comments, um. But I'm wondering, given uh Chris's comments, if we could have a overall statement of. We have some concerns about this. Because I agree, if we just say, these are our concerns, well, I think we have more than just these concerns. And that um we wouldn't, we're going to, you know, put together another. Uh, comment piece on what we think and maybe raise some of these questions in addition to keeping what Jared has, has uh. Suggested, uh, because one of the things that I was, and I don't know if everybody else found this, but some of the P U D you couldn't, uh, the PDF you couldn't read. Did you guys find out the whole traffic analysis was all gibberish? I don't know.
I, I had the same issue.
I, I sent a note to Glenn.
Yeah.
Last night going, can you fix this because?
Yeah, I was, I was told it was a corrupted file.
He has a corrupted file, yeah.
But yeah, all the, all of those were just boxes and stuff.
Well, I, I appreciate them following the I G A, but, you know, we didn't get a lot of time. Because I'd really like to try and push them a little bit on the affordable housing o- o- opportunities and see if there are some. Ways we could incentivize this development to build more than ten percent affordable housing, that's really not going to get us very far. So, I don't, I don't really know what the approach is there, um.
I mean, right now it says Carbondale would encourage the county to be more aggressive with affordable housing requirements to help ensure the project goals meet the project outcomes. Uh, the project could propose a greater percentage of price capped, income restricted and or resident occupied. Restricted units, which would ensure that the housing provided is available to the local workforce. Like, I just, I think that's the level of comment that they're looking for on this, the county is pretty clear that they don't want. Us to ever be in the position of thinking that we're the reviewing body and to tell them how to do their, their reviews and so they look for. What would we like to see more of or less of generally, and I think all these things fit into that.
Okay. But Mike was going to throw in like a voluntary real estate transfer fake.
Yeah, you can throw that in there.
We, we, we have.
Yeah, it's just kind of a grab.
On, on all the units, not just the affordable ones.
That would generate a lot. Okay, well, I think that's good feedback, um, with the, you know, very limited turnaround time that we were given with this. Um, and again, this is going to, this is the start of a process, not the end of a process, I don't imagine that this is going to go quickly, I think that there are going to be lots of opportunities to engage.
Well, even if they got it approved, uh.
Yeah, it's, it's going to be years in the making, this is not all going to pop out of the ground next year. So, I'm comfortable with, with where we are, we're not taking a vote on this or anything like that, so I think um Jared's heard us and can incorporate some of those thoughts into a final.
Just one clarification, I think the, the, the water rights, the affordability, um, traffic concerns, those are clear. Just from my own knowledge, do you want me to add some sort of language like Colin discussed there at the end, it seemed like Ross also shared of. We, we do have some concerns about this project as opposed to saying. We support affordable housing and housing development as a whole, um, I, I'm open to, to either, I just. I'd like some clear direction on that.
Philosophical concern is appropriate at this time?
So, I like saying we support inclusion and supply of workforce and affordable housing in the room for. Consider the issues outlined above.
You could say something about, you know, without substantial changes to the transportation plan and the affordable housing. Carbondale would, would have some, some real concerns about the size and scope of this project.
Yeah, I trust you to do that, but.
And could be a little like.
A little more like, hey, we, this is.
We don't really like this.
Okay.
Wow, us here.
I think, I think that's reasonable, I mean, unless, unless we do, I mean, in, in, I don't sense that any of us look at this and think. Great opportunity to address all of our needs, it's more like a, oh, what can we do to tweak it to maybe make it palatable? At least that's the way I view it and I, I need to, I need to spend more time with it, but um.
I can, I can certainly add language to that effect, certainly.
Well, there is a world where there's an opportunity for it to be positive for us or whatever and improve the highway and stuff, but if we just keep adding stoplights and bullshit, like, like.
And I suspect that um. Garfield County is going to have a lot of the same comments that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We do.
Okay, does that help?
That does, thank you very much.
Thanks, Jared.
All right.
Yeah, will do.
All right, that was a late one, thank you, everybody.
Thanks.